Good evening. The November 4th meeting of the Evanston City Council will come to order. Would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Burns.
Here.
Councilmember Sufferdin. Councilmember Revel. Councilmember Revel, you're muted. I will take that. Yes. Councilmember Revel did email the clerk's office. She will be participating online due to illness. Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Nusma.
Here.
Mayor Biz.
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work. Just to make sure we're in full compliance with the state law, I'm going to move item three to the top of the agenda. Is there a motion to allow Councilmember Revel to participate virtually due to illness?
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Reed moves to approve Councilmember Revel's virtual participation due to illness. Councilmember Nusma, seconds. Seeing no discussion, would the clerk please take the role?
Councilmember Sufferdin.
Aye.
Councilmember Revel. Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Hatakakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Harris to allow remote participation.
Thank you, yes, aye.
Councilmember Wen.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
And Councilmember Burns.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries. And for the rest of the meeting, Councilmember Revel may participate remotely. We now move on to the regular order. Item two, the public hearing on truth in taxation. The Evanston City Council is considering a public hearing on the 2024 property tax levy. The purpose of this hearing is to allow for public input on the proposed levy. There will be no final action on the tax levy today. The 2024 proposed tax levy was included in the 2025 proposed budget and can be found at cityofevanston.org/budget. I hereby convene the hearing for the 2024 property tax levy to be open. The tax levy ordinances are on tonight's -- sorry. The tax levy ordinances are on tonight's agenda for discussion. The expectation is that they will be on the agenda for introduction at the November 11th meeting. Are there any public comments for the truth in taxation hearing? We had two sign-in sheets. There are several people who signed up for the kind of regular public comment, but the truth in taxation signup sheet was empty. Is there anyone from the public seeking to give comment for the truth in taxation hearing this evening? Hearing nothing further, I hereby adjourn this hearing. Oh, sir. So I'll just repeat. There is a list of sign-ups for the truth in taxation hearing that has no names on it. If the folks who signed up for the regular public comment would prefer to give comment during the truth in taxation hearing, that's obviously fine. So I guess what I'll do is I'll just call people. I'll call all you guys. And then if you -- those who speak now will not be called on later, and those who do not speak now will be called on during the regular public comment. So we begin with--
Just point of order and information. There's no time limit for folks to speak during the hearing, correct?
Does the Corporation Council have a view on that?
Or there's an extended time limit?
There is an extended time limit.
And what is that time limit?
I don't think there's any exact limit, but--
So there's no limit?
There's no limit, but it's not indefinite, I guess.
Yeah, okay. So I just want the public to know that moving forward with the hearings. Like you have an opportunity to speak a little bit longer, especially for folks who like yourselves. And then, just because you mentioned it there, folks could speak at both the public comment during the council meeting and at the public hearing, correct?
Yeah, there were two sign-in sheets.
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear on so you can also have two opportunities to speak.
So we'll begin with Marjorie Bassow, who will be followed by Timothy Schoolmaster and then Jack Mortell.
Good evening. It's more of a personal matter today, and I thank you for the opportunity and appreciate addressing the council this evening. In August of last year, I was severely injured by a defective condition on a main route many bikers use in the city. I notified the city of the condition of the road, and to the city's credit, they did cover the problem in the road with a big metal thing, and then they fixed it months later, which was great. But I did file a claim through the city's claim site for my surgery and the loss of my income from the incident in a timely manner that it requires. And my hope was to resolve the things and not have it cost for the city or myself. But and the city personnel from the law department was very courteous. She informed me as to when it went to the adjuster. And the adjuster called me and said that it would be resolved in a couple of weeks. And then I never heard from her, and that was months and months ago. So I just am asking for if you could look into the matter and see if you could get back to me and resolve it. And according to the site, I just accept whatever you guys offer. So thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Timothy Schoolmaster, who will be followed by Jack Mortell and then Tricia Connolly.
Mayor Biz, Manager Stowe, members of the council. Good evening. I'm Timothy Schoolmaster, President of the Board of Trustees of the Evanston Police Pension Fund. I hope everyone here has already voted or has a plan in place for tomorrow. Some very important ideals of what we believe good government should be may hang in the balance. First, I want to take this opportunity to thank the council for your proposed tax levy allocation and additional funding for the police and fire pension funds using the 100% funding model. You are to be commended for your efforts, difficult as they may be, to get the house in order. Last year, you realized that you had been handed a fiscal mess through 40 years of smoke and mirrors. The minimum payments or less have been made for all those years. And as you know, when you pay the minimum amount on your credit card, the finance charges add up. More on that shortly, and I'm tempted to pull out the paraphrase attributed to Winston Churchill and insert that the city of Evanston can always be counted on to do the right thing after they've tried everything else. Thank you for your courage to do the right thing. When the proposed budget was rolled out, I attended and spoke at Budget and Finance meeting on October 8th. I pointed out then, as I do this evening, that the false or incorrect statement on the Page Six transmit letter stating that the city pension contributions to the pension funds, quote, "continue to be recorded in the general fund." That is not correct. There are no pension monies in the general fund, none, zero. Tax levies, employee contributions go into the pension fund operating account or are invested elsewhere. In the budget memo from staff on October 18th, I think it was Mr. Van Dorp, again stated that the budget continues to report the pension levy collection and contributions to the general fund. Again, that is not correct. Similarly, on page 456, you dutifully report that the city's $245.68 million outstanding geo bond debt, i.e. PA and water debt and debt service, 245.68 million. Amazingly, and just $2 million less than that figure, $243 million, the public pension, public safety pension debt appears nowhere in this budget, nowhere. So the debt that the taxpayers have to pay is not 245.68 million. It's 503 million, just a hair over half a billion. The -- this debt accounts for 48% of the total of that 503.243 million that the Evanston taxpayers are currently on the hook for. This gives me cause for concern. I would think it would give you cause for concern. Truth in taxation, I think it's time to make it so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So hold on one second. So we're sort of in this like off-label form of meeting. So a member of council is asked to speak. And I think what I'm going to do is hold the council comments until the public comments are done. But I just want to acknowledge there are going to be some council comments, at least one council comment, after. So the next speaker is Jack Mortell, who will be followed by Tricia Connolly.
Good evening. I'm Tim's Counterpart and President of Evanston Firefighters Pension Fund. Jack Mortell lived here my entire life, served on the fire department. One of my proudest things that I did. I'd like to first thank you, just as Tim did, once again for passing this 100% funding. It was actually only started like 21 months ago that we have the figures for. And a pension fund is, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. It's hard to measure it year by year. You can't overreact on one year. But I can tell you, in the first 21 months, this thing has taken off like wildfire. We're doing a really good job. I don't know if we're like 13% toward -- We're two years, we started with 16 years to go. We'll have two years completed here pretty soon. And it's getting done. We're going to kill that debt, little by little. The current city is -- the city is currently at a high watermark for cash and investments. It's virtually $100 million more than you had just a couple of years ago. I know it might be caught up in various reserve funds and everything else, but it's there. The money that wasn't, you know, it's 100, over 160 million now. Just a couple of years ago was 60 million, 60-some million. So there are, there's a lot to play with right now, right? And this is truth in taxation. And I looked at a lot of the same documents as Tim did. It catches my eye is throughout the document, well, page 22 has all the, it has the net and the gross of all the levies. But us taxpayers, we don't pay the net. We pay the gross. But through all, on page 11, page 13, page 20, page 22, page 34, they show the net amounts. They compare the net amounts. It's not the real amount. It's not the truth. If we're in truth in taxation, you got to put the right numbers. I mean, come on. Well, but I did. But the most important thing is the ordinance, 78048. The numbers are correct on that. But that's a separate document. So what they've been shopping around, because I've gone to some of these these ward meetings, they put up the wrong numbers. I mean, if that, and I brought this up a while back, and you would think that they would have corrected that at some point. And they admitted that they were wrong. So I'm just bringing that up. But I want to close it. I do thank you. This thing is working. It not only helps the police and firefighters that risked their lives all these years, but it helps the citizens because we're killing this debt. It helps the city with a lower bond rating and with a, you can get a better -- it's easier to recruit if you can show that your pension's 100% funded, just like the IMRF pension. There's no reason this one won't be. And there's, you'll see that we pay very little toward the IMRF pension, which is about double these other ones, because it's fully funded. So thanks again. Help is on the way. You're taking care of us. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tricia Connolly.
Good evening, Mayor Biz, City Council, City Clerk Mendoza. This budget impacts the taxpayers much more than City of Evanston's 17, or rather, 20% of the dollar that is shown to taxpayers every year. As you are well aware, we all support two school districts, one of which is now in dire financial straits. I hope City Manager Stowe and upper management does not present COE's budget issues in isolation to what all of us who live here in Evanston are faced with. It is imperative that everyone who is working with City of Evanston's budget understands the weight of deciding what we need versus what we would like to do in respect of the taxpayers. When a poll is given about what people think about the quote-unquote "future" of the civic center that is devoid of the financial implications, this is not helpful to us. It is not helpful with you all being responsible with the budget decisions on behalf of all of us. When there's information being shared in the press about creating a dazzling plaza which happens to be adjacent to the proposed rented civic center space for many years, I wonder who is being served? Please, I ask that there is a priority to what we need versus what we want in this budget before us all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. I just wanted to, very quickly, I know we're a bit behind time, but just process. One, my reading of the truth in taxation statute for the state, are we, this is maybe to council rugby or to finance department, whoever can answer it, but are we even required to hold this hearing this year?
Good evening, Mayor, the members of the city council. We are not required under the rules if the aggregate levy is more than 5% and which excludes the debt service levy.
Right.
We are obviously flat levy, but we have done every year as a part of the transparency.
Which I want to highlight that we don't have to hold this hearing this year, and we're still doing it because the city of Evanston believes in transparency. And so that's a good thing. I'm going to sandwich here. Something I think is not great is if we are going to hold this hearing and we don't have to hold the hearing, I think we need to do a better job of promoting these hearings. I looked at the notice that staff provided in the packet, and who the heck is going to read that? And who's going to get any information? What average person is going to look at that and know exactly what they need to do and why they're going to do it? And so I would encourage us to, especially when we don't, when we're not mandated to hold this hearing, like, we have a graphics department. We can, it doesn't have to be just a huge blob of words that is difficult to understand. So I'd encourage us to add some graphics to that to make it more digestible to folks so we get more than our regulars at finance and budget showing up. Close out the sandwich. I'll just highlight that we have, as Hattash noted, the reason we don't have to hold the meeting this year is because the council has kept the property tax levy flat for the last three years, and we're looking at doing that for a fourth year. And I think that is something to highlight. And I think it's been a good thing for us, and particularly hopefully this year will be a good thing for us if we are able to wrap our heads around looking at new sources of revenue that do not increase the cost of housing in our community. So thank you.
Hearing nothing further, I hereby adjourn this hearing. Now, I would like to call on the city manager to make an announcement.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers and Clerk Mendoza. Just briefly, I wanted to share that we are saddened to share the loss of Tanya Gawans, a service desk officer who had worked for the city for 27 years. She was known as a dedicated employee who was always upbeat and positive, no matter the circumstances. Tanya will be dearly missed. I wanted to share the arrangements for Ms. Gawans. There'll be a visitation this Saturday, November 9th, from 2:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at Donilon Funeral Home in Skokie. The funeral service will be Sunday, November 10th, at 2:00 p.m. in Kingdom Hall on Ashland in Evanston. And the repast will occur at Levy Center after the funeral service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. We now move to public comments. As indicated previously, those who had signed up in person to give public comment, so during the truth in taxation hearing. So I have only one person signed up to speak online, and that is Mary Rosinski. Looks like Ms. Rosinski is no longer online. And so that concludes this evening's public comment. We now move to special orders of business. I would like to make a recommendation so that we can have a coordinated, comprehensive discussion about all these items together, that the motion for discussion be simultaneously both of item SP1 and also of items D1 through D10. If there is such a motion, then I know staff has a presentation to give on all of these different items, as well as some results of a survey that was given to the council. And then from that, we can hopefully have a robust discussion that can allow us to make some progress relative to the budget.
So moved, but point of information. So I'll move that as requested. My only concern is these are a lot of items, and are we going to be limited to just five minutes to discuss the entire budget and several items?
Well, it is the entire budget, both the spending on the revenue side. So I think if folks want more time, that makes sense. You know, as always, I defer to the wishes of the council on this. So I'll start with a five-minute timer and see if the council requests an extension of that.
Okay.
So you, okay. So Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss items SP1, D1, D2, D3, D4, D5, D6, D7, D8, D9, D10. Councilmember Sufferdin, seconds. And we begin with a presentation from many members of staff.
Good evening, Mayor, the members of the city council. So we'll just, yeah, kind of have a short couple of slides about the property tax levy. I mean, obviously, you have seen that. But there's one more about the special service area levies which, for which we have included them in our truth in taxation notice. These are our five special service areas, and the ordinances are there for the discussion. And after that, obviously, as a part of the budget, we have the department directors here for a brief presentation. And after that, Clayton Black would go over the menu of options and the survey results. And thereafter, obviously, we have water rate discussion and the CIP. And we are here to answer any and all questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. City Manager Stowe, Allison, and members of the council. Kara cannot be here tonight, so I'm going to be presenting on sustainability on her behalf. She is ill.
Actually, I'm sorry. Let me just, you said Allison, which is funny, but I should be transparent with the audience in the community. Clerk Mendoza is downstairs helping with a massive, massive number of people participating in the final moments of early voting, which is fabulous. And so Allison has agreed to step in as the acting clerk, I suppose? The person sitting to my immediate left, in any case.
Thank you for that, Mayor. So just some highlights on sustainability. So we've received upwards of $11 million in grant revenue for building decarbonization, EV charging stations, and divvy expansion. A substantial amount of that is our recent DOE grant and $10.7 million. And we are just finishing up the negotiation process on that. We have not received the funding yet, but we're hoping to get that soon. And we will come back with the council with some updates as to what those negotiations looked like and how we'll be moving forward. We will be adding some additional grant-funded staff based on our negotiations. And so that's going to give us even more of an opportunity to have some support, especially as we go through building audits and that type of thing. And then we're no longer funding municipal electricity payments out of the sustainability fund. So those are the three bullets that Ms. Pratt put together. But I also just wanted to commend her staff for the job they're doing. They're kind of behind the scenes, but they're working really, really hard to help with our sustainability efforts. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the council. Every single one of you met with myself and Ms. Pratt recently to discuss our 2025 action agenda. And that's tremendously helpful as we move forward with next year's goals. So thank you all.
Thank you, Deputy City Manager Ruger. Next up is Economic Development Manager Paul Zalmasak.
Good evening, members of the city council. Acting Clerk, City Manager. As I think it was Luke introduced me on Paul Zalmasak. I serve as the Economic Development Manager. Want to step through kind of the end of this year's budget slash going into 2025. The Evanston Thrives Plan is still our guiding principle. It is our work plan. It will be for a long time. However, the funding for that will all be kind of allocated or assigned by the end of this year. And then we'll spend the next two years, probably one year, implementing that and wrapping that up. We can use, just so the community knows and the rest of the council, we can use TIF. Or maybe next year, when we revisit the budget, we could also use Economic Development General Funds to fund Evanston Thrive's initiatives. But for the next year or two, it's going to be mostly just the ARPA funds. The Downtown Business District Cleanup Fund is limited to Northwestern's investment. That was one of the community benefit agreement, part of the downtown revitalization $250,000 fund. And then we have our economic development grants. We discussed this at committee last week. We have roughly $527,000 for the grants that we, that make up our primary grant strategy, including the Legacy Fund, Legacy Business Alliance Fund, the storefront modernization, Great Merchant Grant, Entrepreneurship, and a Sustain Evanston Grant. Something that, so, and by the way, there was, we were not proposing to change that. That was something we discussed in committee, and that was something that we put forward with the budget team. So we were proposing in '25 to keep the budget the same. And then at committee last week, there was a recommendation from the committee, the Economic Development Committee, to the council to move forward, proposal for an additional $200,000 for a grant to be called the Retention and Expansion Grant. It's something that we're going to work through, providing more detail, putting in more of a program agreement together for the next committee meeting on December 4th. I would ask, the council will need to direct staff tonight if we're going to be adding that $200,000 to the budget. That is something that we have not identified a funding stream for or an alternative budget cut. So that's the essence of my presentation. Any questions?
We're going to hold questions until the end.
For the next slide, I believe we've got, I think, Budget Manager Black is going to mention our discussed payment processing. And then Digital Services Specialist Caroline McCraw is going to speak to the city website.
Good evening, Clayton Black, Budget Manager. So we can go back up to that slide, right there. So just one bullet point from the finance department. So we've received some feedback from members of the community and the city council about our online payment processing system that we use, Orbe Pay. We've been with them for about five years now. And there's some challenges in terms of compatibility with some of our other front-facing cashiering, you know, customer-facing tools. And so we've received feedback working with multiple departments, and we've gone out with an RFQ to explore options and alternatives to Orbe Pay. We plan on doing an RFP in the new year. We do expect it to be a slight cost increase with a new software tool. So we've budgeted for that RFP process next year. And again, it's in response to some of the challenges that we've heard from members of the community and city council on some of the payment processing challenges that we face. So with that, I'll hand it over to the next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, City Clerk Allison. My name is Cynthia Vargas. I'm the Communications Manager for the city of Evanston. The city is undertaking a huge project right now. We are working on a digital accessibility initiative. In this initiative, we've included a website redesign, which is a heavy lift. Thank you to Caroline for all her work on that. A final rule was issued by the Department of Justice. The city is mandated to improve our website with ADA requirements. The city is mandated to improve our website with ADA requirements. Our deadline to meet this mandate is April 2026. We've decided that since these implementations have to begin sooner rather than later, we could tackle both the redesign and the ADA implementation requirements. Our current website is Granicus. Their product is Gov Access. There is an average of 80 to 1,000, 100,000 unique active users per month that are visiting our website. And the communications, IT, and ADA coordinator have been teaming up to ensure that we're starting this process diligently and that we're coordinating to ensure that we are following the ADA requirements. From a communications perspective, I'd like for you to keep in mind the importance of our website. It's no longer optional. It's now critical and necessary to have a good website so that our community members can navigate, find resources, calendar events, meetings, all the things that we're able to disseminate through there. We've already began some community engagement. We've launched surveys, internal and external surveys, which we've gotten responses through. And the goal is to make all digital, all of our digital interfaces more accessible, user-friendly, clean, crisp, as well as to give up-to-date functionality. And then with that, I'll take it over, I'll give it over to Caroline.
Thank you, Cynthia. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council, our interim clerk. My name is Caroline McCraw, and I am the somewhat new Digital Services Specialist in IT. To begin, what is digital accessibility? Super quick, it means ensuring that our digital interfaces work for everyone in our community, from proper color contrast and heading structure for screen reader users, to optimize page loads for residents on slow connections, to clear navigation paths for accessing emergency information. The DOJ ruling, which was published in April of this year, has updated Title II ADA legislation to specify digital accessibility technical requirements and provides, as Cynthia said, a compliance deadline for Evanston of April 24, 2026. So this pertains to all of our digital spaces, the city websites, vendor platforms, multimedia PDFs, any internal or external platform with a digital interface. Here, it's a little small here, but you can look later. I just have a diagram of what this project does entail. Yellow is what we are in the progress of. But you can see that this digital accessibility initiative addresses our need to invest in an accessibility testing and reporting tool for some of our spaces, to remediate current content for compliance, to update vendor procurement processes and contracts, staff training, and, like Cynthia mentioned, a website update. So our website, cityofevanston.org, is currently several years overdue for an update. Based on community and staff surveys, along with our own analysis, top priorities for an update will be navigation and information architecture, improved connections to third-party platforms, and accessibility remediation. We are currently in the RFP process for a new website vendor that will help us meet these goals. Ultimately, this project will allow greater access to city services and information for everyone in our community, reducing strain on staff, empowering more self-sufficient residents, creating a strong foundation for future digitization work across all departments, mitigating future litigation in terms of ADA liability, and further developing the identity and appeal of Evanston.
Thank you, Caroline. Thank you, Cynthia. In addition to this project, Caroline is also working and breathing new life into her open data portal and bringing that back online to what it was pre-COVID. So thank you for that. Next up is Administrative Services, Michael Rivera.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, City Manager Stowe, interim clerk Leepseger, and members of the city council. My name is Michael, interim Administrative Services Director. Under Administrative Services, there's four departments under my purview. There's the Information Technology Department, there's the Fleet Services Department, Facilities Management, and Parking Services. I'm here to advise on a couple of expenditures and for 2025 budget. One is the parking garage capital improvement projects, $2.6 million. That's to include parking, access, revenue control systems for all three of our parking garages. Sherman, Sherman fire panel system upgrade at our H21 Sherman parking garage. H21 Sherman structural inspection, that's to ensure that the building has structural integrity for years to come. Roof repairs at all parking garages. We are looking to do roof repair over the elevator and stairwell towers at some of our parking garages. At our 525 Church Street Garage, we are looking to replace and upgrade door operations in three elevators at that site. And then our 1800 Maple Avenue Parking Garage, we are looking to do a scope of the HVAC and all electrical systems in the building to see if we can increase capacity and if we need to upgrade our HVAC systems. Under our Fleet Services Department, we are looking to increase the budget $600,000. And this is due to the cost of EV vehicles that we're looking to add, and the cost being approximately 25 to 30% more than regular fuel vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Next up is Director Flax for Community Development.
Good evening, everybody. I'm not going to say everybody's name. I think that we all know each other now, right? Thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about what we're doing or looking to do in 2025. For community development, we've requested two additional positions. One is another plan reviewer, and the other is what we're calling a combination building inspector. This is a more senior inspector who can handle three of the four trades. The only one not being, that this person wouldn't generally be an inspector for would be the plumbing trade. We have a very high volume of both plan reviews and inspections, and we've discussed that in some meetings, that it's actually much better when we have our own staff doing this work for us than when we are using third-party services, which we've been doing pretty significantly for a number of years. We're going to pay for most of these two employees simply by reducing our third-party services by $170,000. So it's, we're between increased revenue and redirecting the use of our funds. That's how those two positions will be funded. We're looking to increase revenue from community development in 2025. Our building permitting fees have not really been updated to any large degree since 2018. And if anyone's ever actually tried to figure out our permit fees by looking at that online multi-page book, we really think it needs to be simplified because it's not at all easy to figure out. We also have other parts of our department that we're going to be looking at raising or even making some fees. Our property maintenance program right now does not charge for routine inspections at all and doesn't charge for re-inspections. And that really leaves us with not any revenue to offset the cost, but also it leaves us with fewer teeth when we're actually trying to enforce code violations. We can fine people for code violations. We take them to adjudication. A lot of times, the fines are just let go or put off. But we're looking at things like when somebody has a complaint inspection, when a tenant calls and says something's wrong with my unit, we will go to inspect, we won't charge for that inspection, we won't charge for the first reinspection. But we're looking at if the corrections aren't made, well, then let's do an increasing reinspection fee because that can motivate compliance, perhaps. We're looking at things like that to see if we can actually get action when we have these kinds of violations. We also know that we have people who need help to fix up their properties, and those we're going to work with our housing rehab programs and things to, so we're not trying to penalize anyone. We're also trying to get our housing, especially, that's the focus of that program, to really be safe and decent housing. The other thing I want to bring up is we are projecting a significant decrease in our federal entitlement grants. We don't know for sure, and we won't know for a while. There's a continuing resolution that runs until the 20th of December, but it could take a lot longer than that to even get a budget. As you've probably noticed, sometimes we don't get our, the federal government doesn't get its budget till halfway through its fiscal year sometimes. But this is, this has resulted in a reduction in the funding we have for many of the things that we do, both in the housing arena and also that focus on our low and moderate income residents. So that's why there is more of that in the general fund. We are seeking competitive grant funding to make up for that. We've applied for the HUD Pro Housing Grant, and we'll see if that comes through, and we'll keep looking for things like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Flax. Next up is Police Chief Stewart.
Respectfully, Chief Schneider Stewart with Police Department. I wanted to explain some anticipated increases for next year's budget regarding comp time payouts they've impacted by retirements, union wages increases, and the FOP memorandum of understanding. The retirements appear to be trending down, but as more retirements than usual were occurring on a year-to-year basis, the total amount of payouts actually rose. Also, field training officers are in comp time for the shifts to train new recruits. We've had, been kind of a nonstop cycle in bringing people in and hiring. That's impacted it. So pretty much out of the 800,000 approximately, 500,000 of that is going to be related to what I mentioned in salary increases. There are numerous factors to account for with increased rates of overtime. While EPD is still working to hire full staffing, many openings still remain in order to meet minimum street staffing requirements. Hire back, which is overtime, is utilized on an as-needed basis. The security landscape towards special events has been altered significantly since the shooting in Highland Park. With that, oftentimes, we require to have more offices than we would normally have. We are trying to deal with some of the special events by passing on some of those clauses to the requesters of those special events. Reclassifying a vacant technology detective position to intelligence sergeant would actually enhance us to have one more sergeant in our investigations unit. We currently have three instead of four, which we've had in the past. The former IT detective was actually at top pay, and a newer sergeant would be pretty much at the same pay scale, so it's budget neutral. With the 20 vacancies, when I came before you for the state of EPD, I told you we would anticipate having eight academy spots. As of last Wednesday, I was able to secure two more spots, which would put us at 10 spots going into the new year. Respectfully, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Stewart. Next up is Fire Chief Pollup.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, city manager Stowe, Allison. As we move into '25, the Fire Department has several goals that we'd like to accomplish, first being replacement of our turnout gear. Our turnout gear is on a 10-year rotation. This is quite a hefty expense at $3,500 a set of gear. Currently, we're, we need to replace 74 sets. We budgeted to do 44 this year, hoping to continue on a, on a cycle. Some replacing outdated equipment for our fire engine, fire squad, and our truck. We're also looking to right-size the lifeguard operation budget. Since taking over the budget in '23, we've determined the safety operations and how we can do this in a better way. And then we're also looking to increase our overtime for additional training. As next year, we'll be putting five people through a paramedic school that consists of covering their shifts, covering their time and the schooling itself, along with increasing our community engagement, our CPR, Citizens Fire Academy, CERT, Explorers, all of which have proved beneficial to our department and the community. We teach CPR on a regular. Just on our last application list, we had two of our Explorers who made it to the top of the list. So all of these things that we're doing are definitely showing in our, in our, in what we do as a Fire Department. And with all this, by reallocating the budget, this will be a net cost of about $50,000 extra that we're asking for for our budget.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is Health and Human Services, Director Ogbo.
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogbo, Director, Health and Human Services Department. The Health and Human Services Department is requesting an additional position in its albersman program. Currently, we have original albersman, which is a full-time position. And in order for us to meet the state requirements, we need an additional staff member on a part-time basis. All of this will be covered 100% by grants. Given the workload and the complaints and the calls that we receive from our 12 licensed long-term care facilities, this position is definitely needed. And now with that, this will be one of several grant-funded positions within the department. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Ogbo. Next up is Parks and Recreation, Director Thompson.
Good evening, City Manager Stowe, City Community, City Council, Allison. Thank you all so much. First, I'd like to thank the city council for your unwavering support of the Parks and Rec Department. While our department's name is not officially Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, I'd like to offer what might be a paradigm shift for some, but what our department and you have known all along. Parks and Recreation is a community service. What is now covered by our budget, the bottom line, is indicative of our department being a community service. The city is committed to promoting a citywide culture of accessibility and inclusivity. Our department is responsible for leading this charge. The 2025 budget denotes an increase in expenses for ADA accommodations, including interpreter services, tracks, mats, to ensure people with mobility devices can navigate grass during special events, and relining the bike paths along the lakefront to increase visibility for individuals with low vision. Second, inclusion of Community Services Division programs, like Youth and Family Services, the Care Team, those items were not included in our 2024 budget. And of our total budget, nearly $4 million are dedicated to community good programs, not including the $210 that we have provided to date for our scholarship program. Third, revenues from preschool, gymnastics, rental, and food service will offset all expenses for 2025, making the South End Community Center not only net neutral, but net positive for 2025. In the last two years, our department has grown exponentially to include inclusion and accessibility personnel, specifically the ADA coordinator, also a third deputy director to oversee community services programs, food and concession services across the department, as well as a second preschool and gymnastics site to be fully operational by first quarter of 2025. So again, if you're looking at our budget, I only mentioned the $4 million of community good and $210 in scholarships because they, again, provide proof that Parks and Recreation is a community service.
Thank you, Director Thompson. Next up is Public Works, Director Keno.
Good evening, Mayor Bis, members of the council, city manager Stowe, Allison. I'm Director Keno, Public Works Agency Director. And first, I'd just like to thank you for giving me the opportunity, my department and I, to discuss the possible addition of two positions within the Public Works Agency. The first position we want to talk about is a manager of field services, and we are requesting general fund to, to fund this position. The manager of field services' primary role will be to oversee field operations within public services and provide support and direct oversight to the field employees and the five supervisors that manage them. They will be responsible for annual training and compliance with state and federal requirements, ensuring that we comply with time-limited water quality standards, work zone safety, and OSHA requirements. The manager will also be responsible for developing and implementing strategies to reduce on-job injuries, working closely with the field supervisors as well as the safety team, pardon me, to identify potential hazards, enforce safety protocols, and cultivate a culture of safety awareness. I do want to mention the Public Service Bureau. I do want to mention the Public Service Bureau is our largest bureau. They have about 90 full-time employees. That means that they have more employees than the other two bureaus, water production and engineering combined. We are a department of about 160 employees. And currently, the Public Service Bureau chief who oversees that bureau has 10 direct reports. Next position we want to talk about is the engineering GIS technician. We're asking that the water fund to fund this position. This is vital for managing our infrastructure, tracking assets, and making informed decisions. Currently, the Engineering Bureau is facing a backlog of GIS inventory that needs to be uploaded and input into our asset management system within our GIS platform. This backlog has hindered our ability to maintain accurate and up-to-date records of our infrastructure assets, which is critical for planning and decision-making processes. So this technician will support the department by making sure we track and maintain these assets accurately, make it accessible, making the accessible data of our infrastructure that includes water lines, storm drains, streetlights. This will help with our work orders and computerized maintenance management system, and will also assist with future forecasting and maintenance of capital improvement priorities and needs. This will also support project planning and development and streamline regulatory compliance and reporting with the lead service line replacements that we need to do. We need to make sure that all our inventory is correct, that we're tracking it correctly, and that we're providing the state accurate information. I do want to mention that for the GIS technician position, we're not looking for it to start till September 1st of 2025. And even though this is a cost for the city, we do believe that there are potential savings just in the reduction of injuries, workman comp claims will help reduce that and save money for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Keno. Next up is Library, Executive Director Wilburn here. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Biss, City Council, City Manager Stowe. First of all, I want to just take a moment to say I'm so glad to be here. This is actually about one year since I started. It was a year ago last year that I came and presented before you all and met you all. So I'm really glad to be here tonight. So to talk a little bit about our budget, I've put kind of a synopsis up in the slide here. We are intending on increasing the levy this year. It's about 5%, and that is largely to cover the personnel costs that we are going to be incurring. As you know, based on our contract with labor, we have wage increases that we have to meet. And so the 5% really is just helping us to cover that. We also have this year included a 3% salary savings. So that's something we've not calculated previously in our budget. This year, we are factoring that 3% vacancy rate. We certainly want to be fully staffed. We hope to be fully staffed so that we're able to present some of the great programming and services that we've continued to do, even in sort of low-staffed times. But we just want to make sure that we're being really a little bit more accurate. We know that we've had some increases, which has allowed us to build up our fund balance, which we need. Because as you can see here, we are going to be dipping again into our fund balance this year just to meet our total budget expenses. So some of the other things that I just want to mention here with regard to our positions, we really have not increased any positions. We are really doing a good job this year in the year that I've been here of every time we get a vacancy, I've been talking with our managers and saying, you know, is that the position that we really need? How would that be more beneficial if we combine that? Historically, we've had a large number of part-time positions. This year, we did take some of those part-time positions. We combined them to give people full-time jobs, which is really important because that's then created positions where people want to stay with us rather than trying to patch together multiple part-time jobs to make a living. So that's, in essence, reduced the number of total staff that we have in FTE since from what we had last year. And we're trying to make sure that as we're doing that, we're pricing it out so it's accurate, so that we're not going over budget. This year, we are going to be asking for a $1.9 million general obligation bond to help repair the library's roof. That's long overdue. As you know, our building is over 30 years old. We have a number of renovation needs, and we're continuing to have conversations with the city to talk about how that space might be utilized. We do have some space at the library that we certainly would welcome partners or the city. If there's a way that we can utilize that building to make it more efficient and effective for everyone and save money, then we certainly want to be able to do that. And then just final, again, our building is over 30 years old. So lots of work that needs to be done. And so we continue to, like I said, collaborate with the city, and we're looking forward to more conversations to help solve that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wilburn. And you have a couple folks with you tonight, staff and board members. Would you be willing to introduce them all?
Certainly happy to introduce. So we have with us Samir Nota is our new finance manager. He just started with us this year in May, so we want to welcome him. We have Tracy Fols here with us, Michelle Mills, and then Esther Whalen, our board members.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you all for being here. So that wraps up our director presentations. And with that, we'll shift back to Hitesh and Clayton for next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Stowe. Just a few more slides, and then we're, we'll be ready for questions. So at the last budget meeting last month, we presented the budget and received some feedback on this menu of options we proposed. So the proposed budget does include the use of about $12.5 million in general fund reserves in order to be balanced. When we posted the budget, we included a list of 38 items, many of those in the general fund that could be used if we wanted to reduce that draw on reserves as part of the adopted budget. We received direction to send a survey to members of the City Council, and we did that. We received responses from nine out of 10, the nine council members and the mayor. We received nine responses, so appreciate the really strong response rate. And so we're here tonight to give you the results of that survey. So want to walk through the methodology we use to present the data really quick. Not a statistician, but hopefully this makes a little bit of sense as I present it. So we, we present the data sort of in two ways. One, as an average, and one as sort of a count of the number of people in each of the categories. Yeah, it is tiny. So it is posted online too, on the budget webpage, because now I'm looking at this, and it's definitely quite small. But if you go to the cityofevanston.org/budget, you can open it up on the computers you have in front of you. So we presented it in two ways. One is an average and one is a count. So when it comes to the average, we assigned a score of two for those responses that said strongly agree, one for those that said likely agree, zero for neutral, negative one for likely disagree, and negative two for strongly disagree. So the idea being, when we took the average, we would see which way we were leaning with an individual response. We decided that probably wasn't the best way to show the data because you could have some, like, two people who strongly disagree with something, and it'd get a negative average whenever the other seven members of council may agree with it. And then it's just kind of sitting somewhere in the middle. So we also provide the data in this format, kind of counting the number of people that strongly agree, likely agree, or are neutral. And so in doing that, we've put the, put the responses into sort of four tiers. I'll start with the first tier. And so these are 12 ideas where at least five members of City Council or the mayor said strong agree or likely agree with the idea. And we took five as the threshold. Many of these have six, seven, nine strong agrees. And so I'll walk through this list now, and we'll go in, in order. So some of these ideas are credit card convenience fees. This one received nine strong or likely agreement from members of the City Council. We've heard about this one a lot, something that is going to take some time for us to implement in our end with our cash hearing system, but fully something we can do. I just mentioned earlier that we're looking to go out for an RFP for a new cash hearing system in 2025. So this would likely tie into that process as well, and we would do a, do a RFP for our third-party cash, our third-party payment merchant, and then be able to implement this at that time in early 2025. We also received feedback, three community development ideas, residential rental program registration and inspection fees, increasing community development permit fees across the board, and vacant property fees. So two of those are in community development. All three of those received five, six, seven strong or likely agreement, agree votes. Director Flax is here if there's question about those. I know one of those was one that Councilmember Reed brought up last year, the vacant property fees. We would need a pretty full-blown discussion on what that looks like and what gets included in that type of ordinance and what type of fee we were to apply. So it's not just a quick flip of a switch. But if there's support for something like that, we can certainly start that process and get moving in that direction as part of 2025. And then one other one, charging for police overtime at community events. You heard from Chief Stewart about some of these events that are costing us some pretty significant overtime. Many of these are our events, things like Bike the Ridge, holiday tree lighting, the Evanston Recycles event, City Council meetings. Can't charge ourselves for the overtime and make revenue off of that, but for those events that are put on by the community, we can certainly pass on those costs if that's something the City Council is interested in. Seven other ideas that have some support. So there's two small ones in Parks and Recreation, including implementing a field house rental program and additional special event permits. Again, very small revenue generators, but, you know, an idea that came out of our Parks Department. Utilization of the Illinois Local Debt Recovery Program. So working through the state, we would turn in parking ticket data, community standards data, and police data. And that payment would come back to the city through the income tax returns that folks submit through the state. And that idea had six that were strong or likely in agreement. Increasing the long-term care license fee. Again, this was something we discussed as part of last year's budget. A 50% increase to this fee would generate about $60,000. It hasn't been increased in a very long time. Increasing public works right-of-way permits. This was a general 10% increase across the board to public works right-of-way permits. It would result in $30,000. As well as two more. These are enforcing late fees on home rule taxes and wills taxes. So essentially, our collector's office is pretty forgiving when it comes to will tax late payments. We do not enforce late fees on those right now. The deadline was September 30th. We still have folks coming in every day paying their will taxes, and we're not collecting a late fee on that. So this would go back to the pre-pandemic process where we did assess the late fee that's set in our city code. So these are the ideas, 12 of them, where there are five or more members of City Council that strongly agree or likely agree with the idea. Moving to tier two, three ideas here. This is where there are four strong agree and likely agrees. Idea being, there was one person up there who didn't take the survey. So perhaps there's a fifth strong or likely agree vote for these items. And we put them into tier two. Reviewing and increasing Parks and Recreation program and rental fees. You heard from Director Thompson about some of the increases in expenses within that department and some of their programs and community centers. We've put out some memos on some of the gains and losses at some of our community centers and spoke about this a bit with the Finance and Budget Committee. And there is some interest in, in, in doing this, at least among those who responded to this survey. So this would help us close some of the gaps in operating losses at those centers where we do see some operating losses. And again, I don't think these fees have been increased in quite some time, so we would take a look at those. And generally, about a 10% increase to fees would be about $500,000 in the Parks Department. Another one in this category is charging an administrative adjudication hearing fee. It costs us about $225,000 to run our administrative adjudication program. We don't charge a fee. We obviously collect fines through that process. So in that sense, it does pay for itself in many ways. But most communities do charge an administrative fee in order to provide, provide this type of program. So we did a, took a look at a 2022 survey from the Northwest Municipal Conference. Eight out of 10, eight out of 13 agencies that took the survey charged this fee between $15 and $200, depending on the amount and whether they were found liable. Examples include Glenview, Niles, Lincolnwood, and Cook County. We don't charge this type of fee. And then the third idea here is increasing the bag tax. Everybody knows what that is. We just adopted that last year. And so this would essentially double the tax that we currently charge on the bag tax. So these are all generally pretty close, where it seems like there's general agreement from members of the City Council to at least talk about and consider these ideas. The first group, that's 1.6 million, where it does seem like there's support. Tier two, 850,000, where there might be some support. Where we start to get into a little bit of a gray area is tier three. And some of these ideas here, there's eight of them in this category. This is where there are five or more strong, likely agree, or neutral responses. And so we would assume that if you selected neutral for the idea, either you maybe didn't, if you truly didn't have a position on it, maybe you needed more information from staff in order to make a determination of where you fell. So we wanted to at least pull these out and have the discussion and answer any questions to see if anybody who was neutral on these topics felt, you know, otherwise, or wanted to get their questions answered. So some of the items here, delivery fleet tax, two, strong and likely agrees, and then three neutrals. So a lot of folks kind of in the middle on this one. We certainly have some, some questions. I know we looked into this last year about the legality and still haven't been able to find examples of other communities that assess this type of tax, but certainly some interest through the survey. Full and partial implementation of the reduction exercise. So as part of this year's budget, departments were asked to put together a list of cuts that would total 3% of their non-personnel operating budget. It's a relatively small percent of the general fund. But ideas included reducing training, scaling back spending on some economic development grant programs, delaying software and hardware replacement in IT, postponing upgrades to restrooms in some of our fire stations and delaying uniform purchases. Ultimately, all of these would have some impact on services, some impact across the board. If it was easy, we would have just pulled these items from our budget as part of putting together the budget. But these were sort of the next low-hanging fruit if we were to start cutting expenses. And so that's what this list is. Next up is cutting the proposed field services manager position. Director Keno spoke a bit about what the duties of this position are. Certainly not out for recruitment yet. It's a manager-level position, so we wanted to at least put it on this list and get the pulse of the City Council to see how, how they felt about this. Two were either likely or strong agreement to cut the position. Four were more neutral. And then we have a handful of other ideas, increasing the restaurant reinspection fee, stormwater drainage fee, increasing the wheel tax, increasing liquor licenses. Again, fairly moderate support here. And then finally, at the bottom of this list, was increasing the city's property tax. So hard to say what to do with this particular item as we had three strong or likely supporters, two in the neutral category, and obviously one non-respondent. But this is generally consistent with the feedback we received earlier this year when we sat down with members of the City Council and talked about budget. This is generally the, the split that we heard whenever we had that meeting as to whether this was something we would entertain as part of this budget cycle. So, and then at the bottom, we have tier four. Doesn't appear those items have enough support to continue discussing as part of this budget cycle with less than four folks strongly likely agreeing or neutral on these topics. This is a third-party food delivery surcharge, increasing the percent of health insurance costs covered by employees, non-resident parking costs at recreation centers, and scaling back our lifeguard program. You just heard the chief talk a bit about some of the changes they're doing to the lifeguard program, so this would scale back the program in hours a bit. But again, we skipped right over these for, given the votes we received on these. And then finally, the parking fund. You heard Director Rivera talk a bit about some of the big capital projects that they have in that fund. Some of these ideas really should move forward if we want to tackle some of that capital work that's being proposed as part of next year's budget. There are four of these ideas that have strong or likely support, including passing through the credit card fees. I already talked about that. Increasing residential parking permits, increasing surface lot permits, and increasing meter rates on the lakefront. Then we get into sort of the tier two, ideas like raising fees in parking garages for transient workers, increasing citywide meter rates, implementation of a parking utility fee, and increasing various parking citation fines. So those last four are sort of in that in-between where uncertain what to, you know, whether there's enough support to move those forward. So that is a high-level overview of the survey results and the ideas that came forward. At this time, sort of looking for, well, questions for the department directors based on their presentations, but also feedback on this list. Next week, we plan on bringing forward the budget ordinance. If there seems to be support around certain ideas, we'll certainly change that budget ordinance going into next Monday's meeting to incorporate some combination of at least the top tier-one ideas. If anybody wants to talk about the tier-two or tier-three ideas, we can incorporate those as well. We'll do that before next Monday. Otherwise, it would require an amendment after the budget ordinance is introduced. So, thank you.
Thank you so much to everybody for a really very comprehensive and helpful presentation. We now go to questions from council members, beginning with Councilmember Reed, followed by Sufford, and followed by Harris.
Thank you. I typically am someone who discusses revenue. I don't think I've added anything to the budget without also offsetting it with new revenue or cost savings. But I am curious about a few things that are really important to my residents. One, Director Thompson. One, Director Thompson. So you discussed the Parks and Rec Department being a Department of Community Service, and I think that is, I think we almost need to update the name, because I think that is a true encapsulation of what you all do. And one of the community service aspects that residents in the eighth ward, and it was just discussed at our last meeting, really, really appreciated, was the support for block parties. And to my understanding, that is currently not proposed in the 2025 budget, correct?
Correct.
And I think that is for folks, particularly who have wards that have lower-income residents who don't have the resources to put together fancy block parties on their own, I think this, I mean, we, one of my toughest areas and areas that, as far as where violence is more likely to occur, crime might be more likely to occur, but also where folks are struggling a bit more, didn't have a block party this year because they couldn't afford to bring it together on their own. And without this kind of support, we're not facilitating folks working together as a community to make the community safer and cleaner and healthier. So I, this was originally funded out of ARPA, correct?
Correct.
And what was the allocation that we used? I think it was over multiple years, but what was for one year roughly?
For the block parties?
Well, between the two, actually, there was a little over 550,000 that was from ARPA, but then there was also CBGCV, and that was another at least half a million. So there were two. The first was the CARES Act funding, and the second was the American Rescue Plan Act. But that was really where...
And this was just to the block parties? I could just want to...
No, no, that's the whole program of that. So I don't know what proportion of that went to the block parties.
I think my recollection is it was a few hundred thousand dollars over the course of three years.
That is correct. That is correct, just for the block parties, but it also included First Fridays. It also included all of our after-school drop-in, which we've just absorbed, because that's really one service we can't stop.
I would love to get an estimate on the block parties. I would imagine that's less than, certainly less than $100,000 for a year. I'd imagine it's only, you know, a few tens of thousands of dollars to support, particularly if we're looking at areas that are, you know, we can create some criteria, but certainly that are more economically challenged, or other criteria. I think we can keep this to certainly under $100,000 for 2025. I think it'd be critical to bring this back to support those communities. So there is that, and we're not making any motions or anything here. I would hope that if folks have thoughts contrary to that, you'd share that, but I think this is something important to move forward with. Thank you, Director Thompson.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And then for Director Kano. So in the 2025 budget, we are allocating how much to alley repave-ment, roughly?
I'd have to check. That's under the CIP, whether Laura Biggs has those figures?
Five, $600,000?
I think it's five, I think, sounds about right.
Yeah. And that allows us to pave, I'm sorry, I thought somebody had an answer for me. And that allows us to pave roughly two alleys per year, correct?
Correct.
Again, this is another issue that I've been getting from residents across my ward, you know, that they appreciate that the team comes out, you know, roughly once a year to place down the aggregate, but it's, within a few months, the aggregate, there's pits and holes and all kinds of issues for residents. I think we need to step up what we're contributing to alley pavement, repay, or not repave-ment, but paving unpaved alleys. I would encourage us to increase this allocation to allow us to do at least an extra alley per year, if not, you know, again, adding $500,000 roughly is difficult, but certainly at least one extra alley, preferably if we could do two alleys per year. And I'd also like to understand, you know, if we were to do, you know, keep with the current pace of two alleys per year, move it up to, you know, three or four alleys per year, how many years would it take for us to pave all the darn alleys? Because I, yeah. All right, where I'm at with time.
30 seconds left.
30 seconds left. I will go to one more and then pause before we, and for other folks. What does the 2024 deficit stand at today, based on some of the requests that were made, based on at least the options that more than five council members supported? Do we have an updated number? So assuming the council approved the $2.5 million in new revenue that's proposed here that has seemingly majority support, assuming we did that, okay, I'll wrap up for the first round.
Yes, you had said 24, but did you mean FY 2025?
I meant 2025, yeah, yeah.
So it's a budgeted deficit of about 12 and 1/2 million. So if you figure if we were to put in...
Still...
This amount, we're right around a little over 10, if we put in all 15 of these ideas.
Okay, I will pause there for now and wait for a second round. Thank you.
Councilmember Suffert, followed by Harris, followed by Newsma.
Thank you. I got an overarching question, and it came up in the economic development discussion when we talk about Haves and Thrives. What programs do we have that we've initiated that don't have identified funding sources going forward? It's kind of like an overall question. But the thing that made me turn my lights on, I want to ask about the website redesign. And I couldn't, I couldn't read the, all the things about accessibility, which I guess, like, ironic, but, like, the, I mean, when you consider all the things that we need to modernize and improve, that people have strong opinions about, the website probably won't engender the same amount of keep-things-the-way-they-are feelings that maybe like the Civic Center does. But it's a real opportunity, you know, digital divide notwithstanding, that's a big notwithstanding. A lot of people can interact with the city almost entirely through the website. And as we all know, there's some gaps right now. Is there an understanding of what types of efficiencies we can capture and what it might mean for what our actual physical city presence would be if we come up with a website that is awesome? Because that's one of the complaints that people have, is, you know, there's information on the website that's hard to find, or, you know, I tried to help somebody find something on the website and the information was out of date. I mean, are we looking at what other governments do and like, really, and this may be an unfair question, like, really aiming to have the best possible website that we can have that would allow a typical resident with a typical city interactions to not have to set foot into a building and talk to a person if they don't want to?
Yeah, I would say that we are very deep in like the discovery phase right now. So doing a lot of research, lots of landscape scans of other websites, and really trying to strike a balance of, you know, obviously, we could dream even bigger. Our proposal is what we think is the best fit for Evanston, that is striking that balance of creating something that will be sustainable, that can be maintained, that will be much more accessible, have much more information, kind of speak to some of those needs that you're referring to, but also not just be something totally fantastical that we don't need. So I think a lot of our biggest issues, based on the survey feedback and from what we've seen, are kind of infrastructural with the way that the navigation works. You know, it's not just fonts and colors, it's much more about how the information is stored, also on the back end, making it a lot easier for our staff. So our website management model is that departments are responsible for creating their own content just so that there's not that lag and everything is up to date. So we really want to provide them with the resources to do their jobs more efficiently. So I think that this would be really laying the groundwork for, for all departments to work digitally more efficiently, have more possibilities, because they're not, you know, going through 12 clicks to figure out how to upload an image and add alt text to it.
I mean, it's a real opportunity. And one of the complaints that I get the most, and I assume other people up here do, is with in-person interactions where, you know, they're standing in front of somebody, in front of the city logo, and that person can't solve their problem, and so sends them to get another piece of documentation or something. And like, the website is an opportunity to avoid that. And, you know, it comes up a lot with high-volume times like camp registration. I mean, you have people, and I'm not slamming camp registration, I'm just saying, times when you have people who are at the website, like, that's a great time to be like, hey, sign up for reminders about your wheel tax, or, you know, like, About My Place, the 311 is a great way to learn a lot of stuff. Like, I mean, we're working on, I'm assuming, and I'm integrating all that stuff.
Yes, we want it to be much more seamless. There are a lot of third-party platforms, and there's only so much we can do with some of them, but that is the overwhelming feedback, that it's very disorienting to move between these spaces. So we really want to make that much clearer, much more streamlined.
Okay, cool. And then, Steve, I don't know if this is a fair question to ask you, since you're pitch hitting, but one of the budget memos is about the kind of what it would cost for decarbonization of public buildings, and the placeholder number we have is $69 million, and that's like the floor. Are we doing, and again, you're relatively new, and you're not, you're pitch hitting, but like, can, how can we improve our ability to project those costs, particularly with the acquisition of new property, or, you know, when we're making decisions about other, you know, whatever the opposite of acquisition is, decommissioning of properties?
Yeah. Yeah. No, thank you for that question, and unfortunately, I probably can't answer that at this point, just because I haven't gotten into the weeds on how we're calculating those numbers. But we'll definitely make note of that and get some information as to how we go through those assessments and look for ways that we can, you know, fine-tune and sharpen the pencil a little bit.
Okay, because I mean, it's a, it's a big number, and it's a long target. And so like, I mean, we've got to account for it at some point in the process when we talk about what our physical footprint's going to look like.
I would say, just lastly, that I think there's an anticipation that a lot of it will be funded by grants, but again, we'll, we'll kind of fine-tune that and get some more information out to you in the council.
Okay, cool. And then Clayton, and you might, you don't have to get up for this one maybe, but in some of the revenue projections on the survey items, do those include what enforcement costs for the ones that require enforcement? Like, if we're imagining that we would realize $100,000 for something that's going to require enforcement, have we figured that would gross 100-plus and figured out what the cost of enforcement would be?
Get up, just, it's not an easy yes or no. I don't think that the cost of enforcement on many of these would be too much. I think it's just staff time and is an extra step that our frontline staff, from the standpoint of home rule taxes and wheel taxes, we're not adding collector's office staff in order to enforce those late fees.
Right.
They would do that next step.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you, but I, like, you know, particularly, Mike, sorry, man, but like, we, you and I, we've talked about this, like, with parking enforcement, there's a cost to enforcement. And, you know, I know staff has done a really good job of holding things flat in this environment. Holding things flat is actually a reduction. So, you know, the amount it costs to issue a parking violation has increased, and that's several factors. So, you know, like, public works right-of-way permits, that wouldn't require new staff. But would there be, you know, I'll just, I'll stop there, but I mean, like, I just wanted to make sure we're factoring in what it costs to get the money that we're looking at, and I wanted to just ask if that's in the impact or the impact...
I don't think there'd be much of an impact, at least for these ideas. Now, you mentioned parking, which, if there is, I can turn it over to Director Rivera, if you want to hear.
Yeah, I mean, well, my finance is...
But at least these ideas, I don't think there's an impact to the enforcement costs on our end. It would just be a reallocation of the staff time that we have. Instead of just moving on to the next person in line for the wheel tax, you'd say, well, you're 15 days late for your wheel tax you owe, whatever that difference is.
Just have the microphone. Good time to remind everybody, fall street cleaning tomorrow, south and west sides of the street, because those are $75 tickets.
Councilmember Harris, followed by Newsma, followed by Hadakaris.
And I turned, oh, there we go. Thank you. So I was, I told you guys last week, I used to get text messages from Auderman Homes while I was on the dais, and I got some text messages today. They weren't from her. But there are 20-plus people watching on YouTube, so I know we mentioned there weren't a lot of people here, and somebody brought it to my attention, there are people on YouTube. So I don't want to discount just because people aren't present in person, that they're not here and that they're not paying attention. So I wanted to share that data. Fire Department, one of the reasons I almost didn't apply for the position was because of the lakefront issue. And I want to remind us that we did a great, you all, we sat here and just made decisions, did a great job in turning that program around. So if you're telling me it costs, that's what it is, and that's something that we have to do because that was a position. I mean, that was a situation that put the city in great jeopardy. So I want to go on record by, again, saying thank you so much for doing that. And as we all know, it costs to be the boss. So I have no problems with making sure that when our changers are good, that we don't just talk about them, that we spend our money, because that is when you know you believe in something, how you spend your money. To the Sustainability Department, I wanted to say thank you all so much. I know Kara's not here, but you're pitch hitting, so thank you so much. For the grants, grants don't knock on the door and say, here I am. You have to search for them, and that means you're dedicated to the work that you're doing. So I wanted to say, $11 million is nothing to sneeze at. I've also talked to you all about how we need to offer a greater variety of services, not just to one population, that it is my expectation that our services that we're offering are open, and maybe that's in a tiered way, to all of Evanston. It isn't just one population we hone in, but it's all of Evanston, and if people need help, they need help, regardless of what that is. So thank you for that. The library, just wondered, I don't know if you want to come up for me. Thank you so much. I have two of my sisters in the back. Hi, ladies. So you utilize our HR services?
We do.
Okay. I just, I want to make sure those numbers, and I don't know if anybody can give me that information right now, that that is appropriately weighed.
So through the MOU, we do pay the city about $350,000 a year for administrative services.
How much was that?
$350,000 a year.
Okay. Again, I don't know if anybody has any data to say that's appropriate, that's high, that's low, but that'd be something that I'd want us to just make sure that everybody is getting what they need and that there's no, that it's balanced as much as it can be.
So that is one of the strategic initiatives that we have on the books for 2025, is to work on revising the MOU. We know that it was, I think, 2016, I believe, was the last time it was negotiated. So, and then there was an increase, because it was 250,000, and then that was increased, I think about a year ago, to 350,000. And so we are looking at renegotiating that MOU this year. So again, that's part of some of the work that we're going to be doing and talking with city staff.
Okay, great, thank you, especially saying 2016, that's, that's a long time, so we need to make sure we're doing that. Didn't realize the library was 30 years old. Wow, okay.
Well, we're much older, but that's the building we're in.
Right, right. I thought, I don't even remember the old library, but that's more to do with my memory than the city. Thank you, thank you so much. I saw health insurance, and we had voted, is that now... and we had voted, is that not part of a union package? That isn't part of negotiations with the union, what that looks like, what the increases are?
Yeah. It's a part of the union, and it's a percentage of the cost, because cost goes up a little bit every year.
A lot of it, not a little bit. Okay. So you said that most of us voted to not? Okay, that wasn't me. Okay, thank you. And then you said a 12.5 million deficit if we do the few changes there. No, 12.5 if we do nothing, 10 if we make some potential changes. I'll be transparent and say, two things can be true at the same time. And while we may find it hard to raise taxes, everything around us will go up. If we stay flat, everything else goes up, which puts us in a deficit. What that looks like, I don't know. What I find interesting is that I think many times residents believe we don't pay taxes, because the comments they make are like, our, our taxes are going up. Mine are going up as well, but the cost of living and all of the things around us and the high quality of service that we expect in Evanston goes up. So I just want that to stay on our mind. And regardless of the things that are happening around us, and I'll get off the mic in a second, we have to do the right thing, even if there's a pain point to do that. So I'm still interested in seeing the numbers, where we can save, still intrigued by what the police and fire pension we're talking about. But my time's up, so thank you.
Councilmember Newsma, followed by Hadakakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just run through my list here, and hopefully we can get to everything in five minutes. I'm going to start with picking up on the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee to add an additional $200,000 for business retention and expansion. So I'm in support of that. I hope that would have the support of the rest of the council who's not on the Economic Development Committee. I believe that passed unanimously at EDC. I have a question about building permit revenue and what are we forecasting for 2025 and what that forecast is based on? Does it include some developments that are not yet approved but in the works?
These charts are pretty small, but you can see in the building permits, we kind of had a banner year this year, and we're not going to duplicate that. We're not projecting that. But we are projecting $5 million in 2025. We, one of the hardest things about projecting permit revenue is you don't know what always is going to be presented, and you don't always know what's going to get approved. But we have a number of things in the pipeline now that are coming forward from private development. Northwestern has some pretty big plans in addition to what it, you know, the stuff that's already underway, which is hugely significant. But one of the things we also have to balance is, the more effective our inclusionary housing ordinance is at getting our housing units, one of the things that we use as a tool to incentivize and help developers be willing to include those units is we defer some of their building permit fees and we waive the ones on the affordable units. We get paid eventually, but it delays the, because they don't pay the bulk of their building permits then until first temporary certificate of occupancy. Now, there's a reason this is really popular with them, because one of the biggest problems is construction costs. So it's cash flow for them, but it makes it hard for us to predict.
I mean, I think it's appropriate to be conservative in our forecasts, but we do know that there are some developments working their way through the process. And by the time we pass this budget, we might actually have taken action one way or the other on these developments. If we approve a couple of these big developments that are coming to us for introduction on the 11th, assuming they pass introduction and then are fully approved on November 25th, could we count on that permanent, on that permit revenue and maybe bump up that projection for '25?
Not necessarily, because depending on the time, as I say, if they're going to be having deferred, a significant portion of the permits deferred, it's going to take them a while to get actually under construction and get to final. So we're, I don't want to.
So this $5 million is just kind of based on the trend over years and not taking any particular projects?
Doesn't take absolute particular ones into. We have to look at kind of what the pipeline is. If we didn't have as much development interest right now, we would not be at this level.
So it's not a super scientific, it's kind of more heuristic?
Yeah. It's a really difficult thing to be scientific about.
Right. So I guess, I guess if I'm given any feedback, is, to the extent possible, let's be a little bit more scientific about how we forecast that numbers if and when we do know projects are somewhere in the pipeline.
Well, as I say, we're expecting to get that, but it may not be in the, in the next year. So that's the thing you have to think about.
Yeah. Use our best judgment, but we know things are happening. We don't just need to take a wild guess. We can make a more educated guess.
Well, it isn't a wild guess.
All right. Thank you. That was it for billing permit revenues. And then on to the options menu. Just want to give some positive feedback to the finance staff for coming up with this process, looking at page 41, I guess, the permanent, the, the menu of options. I think this was really a very useful exercise as we look for, you know, ways to increase revenue. And if we're looking for feedback here, I am fully prepared to go ahead with the top 12, as long as they're fairly easy to implement, and I think they all are. There's only one of these top 12s that we're setting up, setting up a program, which seems to be a fairly light lift, the Fieldhouse Rental Program. So in most cases, it's just tweaking a number on a form somewhere. And I'm in favor of these 12. If you go down to the second tier, I would support moving ahead with the administrative adjudication hearing fees. I personally was on the, on the leaning no side for the Parks and Recreation Program fees. And my reasoning is that parks, picking up on what Director Thompson said, parks and recreation and community services are a service we offer to the community. And if we can make some money back, great, but I'm not necessarily looking to make a profit. Having said that, let's acknowledge that the South End Community Center, based on the numbers we're looking at for 2025, does look like it's going to be pulling in like a net positive cash flow of about $600,000. So, yeah, I was uncomfortable with the expense to acquire that facility, but I can get over it if it's going to pay for itself in, in three or four years, which it looks like it's going to do. And then further down on the list, I'm sorry, number 15 here, increasing the bag tax. I personally maybe could get on board with that, but it doesn't seem like it has enough support to advance at this, at this stage. So I would say, top 12 plus number 14. And then moving down into tier three, the last line there, and picking up on what Councilmember Harris said, about increasing the city's property tax. The last time we increased our levy was four years ago, 2020. And what cost a dollar in 2020 now costs a dollar and 22 cents. Like, inflation has been significant, and we have not kept up with inflation in terms of our, of our levy. And, and, and good for us, that was appropriate, given the fact that we were drawing down on a fairly significant fund balance, coming off of ARPA, and some, mostly ARPA, right? But some other reasons, we were sitting on a pretty good fund balance. This is my last point, so I'll wrap it up shortly here. But if we don't do something soon, I'm looking at the projected fund balance over the next couple of years. We are in for a very, very hard landing in 2027, when our fund balance goes, you know, almost down to zero. And I think it would be very appropriate to make some, take some measures now that will steer us towards a softer landing. And rather than looking at a fairly significant tax increase in 2027, taking a baby step this year, maybe another baby step next year, also keeping in mind, we're going to lose, was it $2.5 million in grocery tax revenue? Right? That's something else to think of, you know, for next year. I, it would be supportive, and I think it is appropriate to consider a small increase to the levy. So I guess my time's up. I'll leave it there.
Councilmember Hadakakis, followed by Kelly, followed by Burns.
So I will echo what my colleagues have said about, thanks to the finance staff for aggregating all these options and, you know, having the, the survey for us. Where we're at right now with the deficit is someplace where I'm not comfortable. So I hope that we would take all the tier one and tier two recommendations. Also, I think, not to forget the parking fund, but I'd also go tier one and tier two there personally. A couple of things that, you know, we, in hearing the presentations, the presentations have all been great. It's really good to hear all the future plans that the directors have. A couple of things stood out to me, and I'll kind of piggyback on some of the stuff that council members suffered and touched upon. I'm like, I was really excited to hear about the open data piece. For me, you know, you have to look at operational efficiencies. There's a lot of, I think, ways we can better deliver services and potentially cut down on costs in the future if we do this, like, very, in a smart way. I think that's something that we have to start telling that story and aggregating that data and taking that so we can say, hey, we did this, and this is what, you know, we might have spent $100,000 on X, but we have saved this many calls. I think, you know, given where we are financially, that's something we really have to focus on being as efficient as possible, as possible. Kind of building on that. Great job by the sustainability group, getting those grants. I would really like to see some information about what money we're going to save by, you know, decarbonization. I think we, we almost, we can't afford to not do this, right? So, you know, something like, I know we had a presentation a year or so back, talking about like the, the service station and the fuel costs. I would like to see numbers on how we're trending with, you know, our, our gas and fuel costs based on, you know, our increased usage of EV vehicles. And, you know, we're having, we're very soon going to have solar at Crown, and kind of what that means for our building efficiency. Because, you know, just personally, having solar panels on my house, like, half the months, I have a zero bill. And so that, I think, if we're really forward-thinking, we can make some pretty big gains in saving some money. So I'll leave it at that.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns.
Thank you. I also agree with regard to the economic development of funding of $200,000 for relocation, expansion, and retention. I think that, you know, returns to us many times in supporting our, our businesses. And I think overall, my understanding is, we have a relatively small amount overall allocated to economic development in that sense of supporting our businesses. So I think this is a needed increase. And I'd like to ask that we, in, to respond to what the Police and Fire Pension Board Presidents mentioned, I think we really do have an obligation to present our debt more accurately. And on pages 455 and 456, and this is a little bit, Councilmember Harris, you were asking about this. So our pension debt, you know, our, our GO bond debt and IEPA loans is listed at about 245. Well, our pension debt is almost that again. It's like 243, 243 million, just so the public understands. I believe that there is a Gatsby rule that really directs us to include that as debt. That is debt. And our residents really need to know what our total debt is. So I'm going to ask that we please, you know, structure this, our presentation of our budget that includes our, includes that debt. And I would ask for the public, when, when we present pie charts about our expenses, that we list the public safety, when we list the police and the fire, that we list the normal costs. Normal costs include, you know, salaries, benefits, and a normal contribution towards pension. That comes to like, you know, seven or eight million. I mean, it's going to be a lot less than what we're seeing that we're paying, we're putting that whole, you know, pie chart chunk, the debt that has nothing to do with our police or fire departments, those were administrative decisions over many years, and council's acquiescence or agreement to, you know, underfund, underfund, albeit legal, but to underfund for many years. That shouldn't be considered the cost of running a police or fire department. And I think our public really needs to see the normal cost. And the debt, that incredible debt needs to be listed together with, with our other GO bond debt and IEPA debt. And it should be a portion of that debt, that debt, you know, as that overall debt. We need to bring clarity, transparency to that. So I ask, please, that we start representing with transparency and accuracy the real debt that the city has, which includes that enormous public safety pension debt. But yes, I'm very happy that we're finally reversing that growing debt. Let's see, and I had, let's see, another question. Oh, and I wonder if we could get a total, just so we also have an understanding, the total amount being generated, the total amount that goes into the TIF funds, it would be good to see. And I'm sure that's, is that there? Is there a total amount from '22, '23 listed? Okay. Can you just, like, what, where are those numbers, like, '23 and '24?
I mean, the TIF revenues are there. I mean, reports are available publicly on the Cook County website, too.
I mean, is that, do you know what the, is there anything?
And in our audit report, you would see the revenues for each fund, and that would be the increment.
Would you be able to give us an idea this evening, like, how much in '23 went into TIF, the total amounts? I think that's important also, because that is a decision we all make. And, you know, I think it's something that should be considered in terms of, and I know it's very debatable, but whether or not, you know, had we not had TIFs, where we'd be?
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, TIF total, I mean, I would give you both the numbers, EAV and the revenues. For the '23, TIF total EAV was 190.2 million for all TIFs. The same value for '22, total TIF EAV, yes, $190 million.
Went into the TIF funds?
Not.
No, no, EAV.
No, what is it? So?
That is a EAV, equal.
Okay.
If you are looking for the revenues.
Yeah, revenue.
Let me just, 5.6 million was a TIF incremental revenue.
Okay, 5.6 million in '23?
In '22, it was 4.1 million.
Okay.
In '21, it was 4.5 million.
Okay.
And this year, we are expected, I mean, based on the projections, 6.8 million.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's, that's helpful information.
And just point of.
Okay.
Devon's about to remind you that only 17% of that would have gone to the city.
Yes, that is exactly.
Right. No, that's a very important point, but nevertheless, in terms of residents' affordability, and I know it's, you know, up for debate whether or not that we would have received it otherwise, that if that money would have been generated. And then I just, I had a question regarding some of the, some of these numbers, like the 20, and I appreciate your work on this, like vacant property fees when we estimate it. it 20,000, or fieldhouse rental. I'm just wondering how we, what we base like 20,000 on for vacant property? That we would, if we wanted to increase those.
I'm going to look to Councilmember Reed because I believe that was a number we got from materials that were put together as part of last year's budget.
I didn't come up with the $20,000 number. I think my number is higher, but it's, I think it would be, the way we formulate, and I think I'll task staff with coming back with a better number, but I think we should charge a significant amount for folks who are maintaining vacant properties and basing that on the number of vacant properties we have in the city, you know, maybe it's several thousand dollars per vacant property per year.
No, I don't, I don't disagree. I agree. I was just trying, I was just trying to get an idea as to, is that a certain percent increase over what we charge?
There's nothing charged now.
There's nothing. There's none at all. So that's, would be like, what per, I mean, I don't have.
In fact, you're incentivized in some ways to have your property.
No, I support this, but I just feel like it's, what is it, where, how do we arrive at that number?
I can't say, since, since the city council hasn't had a whole lot of conversation on this topic and what's exempt and what we would charge, we don't really have a way of coming up with that number. So it would be a conversation probably throughout early 2025 to develop the ordinance, setting the fee that would help us come up with a better projection. But this is certainly just a plug number essentially for now.
Okay.
If I remember correctly, my estimation, I think, was somewhere closer to 200,000. Yeah.
And Councilmember Kelly still has the floor.
I think that's my last question. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns.
I wasn't going to talk TIF, but TIF was brought up. Whatever the amount is, because it's a little unclear, considering our budget deficit would have almost certainly been swallowed up with existing obligations, and quickly swallowed up, right? We just heard the amount, and that amount is like, I think it's 17% of that.
It would have been about a million dollars per year.
Right. So I just want to start there. In addition to that, we all know, we should know, that the whole point of TIF is you make the investments and then you collect more than you would have if there was no TIF when, after the 23-year period. So that would have to be debated in order to really know the effects that TIF has. It's also a leverageable opportunity because we don't just put in our local funds, we get other taxing entities to put in their funds as well, right? Which we otherwise would not get those funds from Cook County, Oakton, I think is in that, as well as our school district. So that would have to be accounted for. And then in particular, with the 550 TIF, it's all that investment that I just talked about from the taxing entities is going to go towards helping with affordability, right? Like very specifically and explicitly being used, will be used to support people who are trying to stay here in Evanston, and it will be used to make Evanston more affordable. So that's my TIF comment. I have some, just an overarching thought, and then I'll go into details. I'll probably need more time, but I'm happy to use the time I have. And then I know Councilmember Reed wants to discuss a few things, and I'll go after him. I mean, quite clearly, the issue is that the city of Evanston has either realized increases, whether it's from inflation, salary, et cetera, that it has, and has not determined how to fund those things. That's whether it's pensions, whether it's salary increases. Again, all these things are great, but when we do those things, all we do is we say, oh, well, we'll try to figure out how we pay for them, and if we can't figure out how to pay for them, we know we can always fall back on property taxes. And that's, that's been the model, that not only this city has used, but most cities have used. And what's concerning to me, I just realized this as I was, I've been thinking about this budget, is unlike maybe even our CIP plan or our PITCHA plan, I don't know if we have a budget plan, like a budget, a budget, I don't know if we have a plan to address just the increasing cost to operate this government. And I think if we did, and we invited the community to participate in that process, they would have a much greater sense of why things go up and down, but particularly why they go up. And I say this because I talk to so many people, and they're like, they think we're nickeling and diming them. And I'm like, and when you hear this deficit, you're like, how are we, how are we nickeling? When I hear nickeling and diming, I think of something in excess, in great excess. We got a deficit. That means we're not bringing in enough to handle our obligations and to provide quality services that we all enjoy. That's what it tells me. It also tells me that somewhere, and I don't know where, where we got lost in this, that people feel like we're shareholders up here somehow benefiting from these increases. Because that's, that's, I feel like that's the only way you arrive at, oh, you're nickeling and diming me. Like, it's somehow they have, people have disassociated themselves from the things that they enjoy every day and what it costs to pay for them. And that's a problem. And I think it's our problem. Like, we have to figure out how, how this budget process can help with this, can, you know, and I have some ideas, won't talk about it now, but we have to figure out how we make this budget more accessible. One of the things that I think we need to take advantage of is maybe in upcoming election, we need to have more ballot questions. I, I think there's a, I think when it comes to police and fire, most people would say, yep, that's something that we all should subsidize, right? Like, I'm okay chipping in, even if I never need the police or fire, which they probably will, but even if I don't, I understand that that is, that is a service that, that we need in our community. I don't necessarily think people feel that about everything. We may, but I don't know. I don't know how they feel about park programming, for example. Maybe if we ask them, they say, no, if I'm not using it, I don't want to pay for it, right? And certainly not at the amount that, that we may be proposing in this budget. Who knows? When was the last time we asked the public? And I'll kind of close this first part with that question, like, when have, have we ever went out to the public and said, hey, we want to understand, like, what are the things that should be subsidized that we all should pay for versus what are the things that, no, we, if there's an increase in it, increase in programming costs, increase in salaries, we're okay with you adjusting the fees? Have we, have we ever done that?
2017, 2018, Wally Bobquicks put together. It was a terrible thing.
And I'm not talking about the.
Priority-based budgeting.
Because that, I don't, that's not what I'm talking about.
I think the theory of priority-based budgeting, where we gave the 100 different services and said, list your top 10 and list the bottom 10, which you don't care if we eliminate. And we did it.
We almost had a riot.
2018, yeah.
And I think the question is that I would ask a little different than that, but, but, you know, but I appreciate that. I do remember the priority-based budgeting. But I do think that we need to revisit how we can do that, and I think, and again, it's just an advisory question. It's not like we have to adopt what we hear from the public, but I think we need to have that conversation with them. I'll stop there. I do have other more kind of focused questions, but I just wanted to start there. Thank you.
Thanks. At this time, there's nobody requesting to speak. I'll just make a quick, quick comment. I'm also appreciative of the structure of the, and content of the presentation, presentations, really appreciative of the seriousness with which people up here are confronting the reality of the budget challenge, which is severe. My own comment on the reaction to the presentation would be, I, clearly the tier one, I think, should all be incorporated in the budget. When it comes to tiers two and three, I would just urge caution about the fact that there's, there's some differentiation internal to those tiers between items, like something didn't make it to tier one because it didn't have five yes votes, something that had four yes votes and everybody else was a no vote, which I think is actually one of those items, is very different than something that had four yes votes and one or a number of neutrals. And so like, for example, the increased bag tax, you know, yeah, it had four agrees, but also had zero neutrals. And so that, to me, is in a different category than the two above it, which had four agrees and also two or three neutrals. So that's, that's the only caution I would give you guys as you're kind of compiling this feedback and moving on. So this time, we'll go to folks who have requested to speak a second time, beginning with those who didn't use all their time the first time. Councilmember Kelly, so you have 30 seconds left, and I'll let you go on beyond that, but I wanted to start with that.
Thank you. So I think in terms of the structural deficit, you know, technically, yes, there's a deficit. We end the year with a lot of excess revenue. For example, we budgeted, just for one example, and there are many like this, we budgeted for interest in the bank on our cash and investments, we budgeted about $850,000 for the year 2024, for this year. But we're going to end with closer to $7 million in interest that we earned. So we're generating a lot of excess revenue. What happens then, that's at year end, we roll over to January 1st, it becomes, you know, unassigned reserve funds, and then when you take from that, that's called deficit. So I just want to put a little clarity on that. And this idea of this dipping, you know, the structural deficit going down, that's also based on a lot of assumptions on spending and other things. So I just think we have to be careful in how we look at that and assumptions we're making. So I just wanted to mention that. And with regard to the third quarter report of our cash and investments, I know it is, I think Mr. Mortel pointed out, you know, more than we've had in that, in our cash and investments in a long time, it was at about 170 million. So how much of that is unencumbered?
I mean, I don't know what is unencumbered, but.
Okay, unassigned. I know you have a lot of terminology, and I know if I don't hit it right, I don't get an answer, and it's been really frustrating.
Okay, so let me just first clarify your why it's high. So that would be a good point for transparency. We are at around 169 million as of the third quarter. The few items, just the three or four, ARPA is still carrying a cash, even though it is encumbered kind of.
About 20, right? About 20 million?
Yeah, 20 million. Then just two months back, we issued the bonds, which was $34 million cash, and which will be used not right away, but over the next year, 12 to 18 months. Then we have got the property tax money, which is typically every third quarter, we get the second installment, and which is the amount of 24 million, and the debt service payment. Now, remember, debt service principal, which is the big payment, it's only once a year in December 1st. So that's why your debt service has almost 12 to 15 million dollar cash. But our debt service payment as of December 1st is 16 million. So if I add up these four items, ARPA, CIP, property tax, and debt service, is $94 million out of 169 million.
Okay, so my question remains, though.
Yes.
Still, my question remains, of that, how much is assigned?
Is it?
Like, okay, how much do you, of that, how much is unassigned?
There is no assigned and unassigned cash balance. It is a fund balance, which is assigned and unassigned, and we don't do it during the, even for fund balance during the month, it would be as a part of our annual audit.
Okay, I'll look to the audit then. Thank you.
So at this time, no one is requesting to speak who hasn't used up all their time. So I'll go back now to Councilmember Reed for a second crack and just ask those to be mindful of the time as we, as we go into our second five minutes.
Okay, or if you're putting a five-minute timer on. Okay, great. So for this round, I.
But you don't have to use it all.
I'm going to use it all. Sorry. For this round, I'm going to, I'm going to deviate to the library really quick. I do want to focus on revenue shortly, but I'm first going to take the library. So there's proposed 5% increase. What is that dollar amount? I didn't quite see it there. Is that a?
So the tax levy revenue?
Specifically, the 5% increase, what does that represent in dollars?
That's what our revenue is. We get, we don't, we don't sell anything. The only way.
He's just saying, what's, what, translate into a, in a raw dollar number, like 50 trillion, for example.
Okay, $410,000. Thank you. No, no, thank you, Mayor Bissell.
It was less than 50 trillion.
Yes. Okay, so $410,000 is what you're increasing, what you need to increase the property taxes. I don't, I guess this is from Andrew Stowe. With administrative services that we charge the library for, we're essentially one entity. Why do we charge that? And I guess I heard that it, we didn't, we don't quite know how we got to that number exactly, because, but I'd be willing to personally absorb that to the city, because it's the city, essentially.
So I can't speak to, thank you for the question, Councilmember Reed. I can't speak to the conversations back in 2016. And I think as Director Wilburn mentioned, it was 250,000 back then. Now it's 350,000, and if you index it for inflation, it's, you know, it's on par. I think 330,000 would be in 2016 dollars now. You're correct, it is the same taxpayer base. You know, ultimately, I think at the end of the day, probably from, from a transparency standpoint, probably makes sense if we're providing services to our component units, library, that they do reimburse us for those administrative costs. I know going forward, we want to renegotiate the MOU, and then also identify, you know, is 350,000 the correct number for the services that we offer the library?
Okay.
At, at the end of the day, I think the arrangement, and I don't want to speak for the library staff and leadership, at the end of the day, from a taxpayer standpoint, I think it actually does work out really well, so that the library doesn't have to go have a separate HR team, a separate law team, payroll, finance, you know, a whole bunch of other administrative services that they'd have to carry on their own. I think it, from an economy and scale standpoint, I think it makes sense.
Sure, but as the director noted, the library doesn't receive a lot of revenue from other places where we do. I think the taxpayers might actually appreciate if we used our power of the purse to pick up the tab and not have them shoulder essentially the full cost or more than the full cost of the administrative services fees that we're charging here. But I do think it's worth interrogating more and figuring out more definitively what, if they did have their own contract with a lawyer and, you know, some HR staff, could they potentially pay less than $350,000 for an organization that has how many employees?
We have about 100.
About 100 employees. I don't know. But that's for you all to figure out. Thank you for that. And then this was a question that came, or before I go to that, actually, still, so the building, the library is underutilized, the main branch. And I think, if I remember correctly, your utilization of that building, you could get by only using 30% of the building or 40%, what was the?
No, I think about, right now, we're on.
Was it 30,000 square feet? Am I getting 30 some, somewhere?
No, right now, the two, the first floor and second floor are fully utilized. On the third floor, we have some space that is not being utilized, and so there would be room there. Potentially with renovations, the fourth floor would have additional space. That's largely where we have our administrative offices. So again, I would say more like probably 2/3 to 75% we, we would occupy. But again, with renovations, there might be some opportunity for correcting that or downsizing our footprint.
Thank you. And please forgive my aging brain if I'm saying something that not, I know there are discussions about the city looking at the library as a potential space for us to move And so what were the numbers there as far as the square footage that the city would need versus what's available at the library?
Sure, so as kind of a baseline, we're going to utilize about 53,000 square feet at 909 Davis. So we would need either that amount or a little bit more if we were to contemplate sharing space with the library at the main branch.
And then what does the library have currently overall? And then what aren't you using?
Right now, about 90,000 square feet is kind of the area that's considered public services. The building is 125,000 square feet. So again, about 2/3 of that is what we're utilizing right now.
So not quite enough for us to move in?
It would, it would probably require some form of an addition on top of the current footprint.
Okay, and we are, we have a $15 million lease with 909 Davis, correct?
You mean a 15-year?
15-year, and I'm sorry, what does the annual cost again?
2.5.
2.5 million. So 30 million, I'm sorry, $30 million lease over the next.
Yeah.
Actually, more than that, 40-some-odd million. I think there is something, I mean, I know it's being discussed, or I don't know where it is. I don't want to put anything out there that's. I don't want to put anything out there that's beyond where we are, but to me, that just, there's several million dollars of savings over the next few years there. Not going to waste my time right now re-litigating the nine oh nine Davis lease, but I think there's some clear two and a half million dollars annually that we could, could save. Talking about a structural deficit. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to go to, just while we're on kind of the wackier stuff right now, at least coming from me. To the same point with the library, that we're all serving the same tax base, we should really see ourselves as one unit. We're looking to create affordability throughout the city of Evanston. We have, yes, a structural deficit, but we also have a very, right now, a fairly strong cushion in our excess reserves. And I know that the mayor and the mayor of Skokie recently sent a letter to District sixty five regarding the school closings. It's something that, you know, campaign season is fun. We get to go and knock on doors of strangers and folks who aren't strangers, and hear a lot of things that you may not hear during the normal course of business. And what I'm hearing from folks is they're extremely concerned about District sixty five. Obviously, that is a separately elected board and a separate taxing body, and I will wrap up on this round here, but I, I think we know that the state of Illinois, it's a separate taxing body, separate unit of government, Cook County, all of it, the city of Evanston, I think, had, or the city of Evanston, not I think, certainly has the power to help District sixty five get its finances in order by providing grants that are, you know, conditional, that push them toward what we, what we think they need to do to stabilize their finances. And I think we can bear some of that if they make steps that are, that the city sees as beneficial to the tax base. And I think we need to start using the power of the purse during, we can't just wash our hands of District sixty five and two oh two, and no offense to anybody who's serving on either one of those boards, it's hard work, I know, we all know, but clearly, there is something-
Can I ask you to bring this to the end?
Yes, I'll bring it to the close, and, and I think we need to set aside funding, we, we need to look at how we can provide grants to the school district to help them stabilize their finances, help them move in the right direction and use the power that we have. And last thing on this round is participatory budgeting should be in the twenty twenty five budget. I haven't seen it yet, and I hope we will soon.
So we'll go back to Councilmember Burns. So I just gave Councilmember Reed an extra five minutes. I'll grant that to you. I see Councilmember Reed's light is on. I would propose that we not allow beyond ten minutes, if, as always, that can be overruled by council, but, but I would, I'll grant another five minutes to Councilmember Burns and then see if-
Just point of order on that. I just spent my time focusing on the library, which is its own item there. We've talked about the budget, and I'm looking to talk about something separate of library and things that were covered.
You're welcome to use that argument when you try to persuade your colleagues to give you more time. I am, I am unmoved. Councilmember Burns.
I just wanted to also say that the questions I would ask if we went out for referendum have less to do with, should we have, should we pay for this program at all, yes or no? And it's more of a question of, and this, this goes to, I think, the need for some type of plan within our budget process that can be implemented for the next five to ten years, whatever amount of time we choose. But like, if there's an increase, then what, how do we pay for it? Budget surplus, property tax increase if needed, as opposed to increasing the fees on the people that use the service, right? So that's what I'm talking about, like, getting some clear direction about, because we know costs are going to go up. In, in this, in our packet, it says, and Darryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but it said thirty two percent increase in the cost per lineal foot for water main replacements. Like, costs are going up, we're just not, we're not figuring out how to, where we're going to get the money from, right? And if we continue to pass it on and on, like, at some point, we're going to get to where we are now, where we have to pay for it. And so it would be nice for the next five to ten years to know what we do when we arrive at, at that point, instead of always having to, like, figure this off off the cuff, like, okay, what are we going to do now? Like, we know what the increases are. We can anticipate them to a certain degree in every department across the city, and so it would be nice to have some direction. And that's the type of direction I think we can get from the public if we were to use ballot questions effectively. A question, the, I'm trying to scroll through it, in Parks and Recreation, Director Thompson. So I see five hundred thousand here is what is proposed. Is that, has that already been, have those increases, proposed increases been vetted and compared with neighboring communities, or how did we arrive at that half a million?
So we looked at our current program expenses, and first, let me say, it is a little bit more difficult to compare other programs, even if they appear to be the same. I'll just give you one example for our pottery program. If you go to area places or even private places, they give you a certain amount of clay, and that's it. For our programs, there's unlimited clay. So I think there are, there is a lot of differences, and so we look, we leave it to our program coordinators to look at other programs. So we're at under or right at the amount. The way that we came up with the five percent or ten percent is we felt like, when you look at camp, a camp could be a thousand dollars. And so if you're looking at adding ten percent for that, you're adding an additional hundred dollars. So we looked at those programs that are under five hundred and maybe doing just ten percent for those that are under five hundred, and then those that are over five hundred only doing five percent. And so maybe a person could stomach five, fifty dollars more than an additional hundred dollars for a summer camp. So that's the way we looked at, at those programs and how we came up with that. And then we took those on an average, and that's how we came up with about a half a million.
But you don't feel that those increases put us out of line, too far out of line with what somebody could get somewhere else?
No, I do not.
Okay. The other question is, are we using census data or any available data to determine whether parks with play equipment are located in areas with a high or low population of school age children? And I say that because, you know, adults can use play equipment, so I don't want to take that away from them. You'll see some folks using the swing sets from time to time. I hop on there when my children are there from time to time and enjoy it. But for the most part, it's for school age children. So I love to see some data that shows as we think about how much play equipment that we have to maintain at the moment, it'd be nice to have that type of data available. Have y'all done that type of assessment?
Yeah, so a, a part of our strategic planning internally and the one that we have with the Parks and Green Space, we are looking at that. You know, AI does provide some of the information that, that we're able to use. I will say that when it comes to many of our, our playgrounds, I think it's incumbent upon our department to, to really even work more with Public Works as far as programming and what is necessary for what the neighbors are normally using the playground or the parks for, as well as what we also need for programming for the department. So looking at community members and what we're currently using, so we know which parks need to have renovations quicker than others, and also using our inspection reports in order to really work with Public Works to ensure that we're looking at all of that data in order to come or arrive at some conclusion.
And when, when will that process be completed?
We are meeting with the consultants next week.
Okay.
And then we'll have the questions from our Parks and Rec Board answered, and we will meet back with them to discuss those answers, and then hopefully, the plan will be complete.
That is it for Parks. Thank you, Director. Darryl, a quick question for you, two questions. What, what costs are borne on our wholesale customers? Mayor Biss, members of City Council, City Manager Stowe. So the costs that are borne on our wholesale customers are the assets that we charge them. So each wholesale customer has an asset list, and each one of those lists, for the most part, they're the same, they're different for others, but it's based on assets that are included on that list. We charge them for that. So three components. We charge them for the assets, and, and we charge a rate of return on a percentage of those assets that they use. Then we charge them a depreciation value, and then we charge them a quantity charge for the amount of water that they use based on pumpage and expenses. Okay. Do you know what, so we're, there's going to be a reduction of the sewer rate, increase of the water rate, reduction of the sewer rate. Do you know what we're, what the customers are saving by keeping the, by reducing the sewer rate? How much they're saving annually about? Well, the, the total water sewer charge would go up seven percent. So it's not necessarily a savings. It'll, it'll cost a little bit more. It just won't be that total. Like, if we kept, kept the sewer rate, well, actually, this, we don't have to do this here. I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you offline on this one, because this might, I need to figure out exactly how to ask this question. Okay, I'm good on, I'm good on water. Thank you, Darryl, appreciate it. The, there's two, two things that I would like to add to this budget on the expense side, and I'm still working with staff to figure out a way to pay for it, since that's been the theme. One is an apartment locator, and this is, this is the last thing I want to say. I think one of the, the biggest challenges that we're, that we're facing in Evanston trying to keep renters here is that we all feel as though there's not enough supply, but there's more than, there, there's more available than I think we understand, because we don't, there's no effort towards trying to determine what is available at any given point and what may be available in the next few months when someone needs it. So for example, there's people who know that their, you know, their lease is coming up in three to six months, let's say. If they search right now for an apartment, there may not be one available. But if we had an apartment locator who's actively building relationships with landlords on a regular basis, they would know, oh, well, at Emerson Square, as an example, in six months or three months, there is a unit that's going to be available, because this person has already, the tenant has already determined that they don't, you know, plan to resign, renew their lease. That type of, you can't search and get that information online right now. And, and that's why I've said that, that some of the best opportunities for people are unlisted, but Connections doesn't have the capacity to do that type of work. I would say we have a housing specialist in the city where half of their time, maybe less, can be dedicated to doing that work. It needs to be full time. And I guarantee that we would be able to, 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 to keep a lot more people here in Evanston if we could do that. We've, we've experimented with this a bit in, in dealing with the housing crisis on Wesley. We were able to, thanks to, to the work of staff and Connections for the Homeless and a lot of people, we were able to, every, every single household, we, we found an apartment for them here in Evanston, and, and that was because we were doing some of these things that we haven't figured out how to pay for on an ongoing basis. But if we had that effort-
Can I ask you to bring your remarks with us?
If, if we had that effort, we could, we could keep so many more families here in Evanston. And then the last thing is, is year-round community maintenance teams. So we have a community maintenance team through our youth and young adult summer program, and the way I've always understood it is our most, at least the team I'm referring to is our most at-risk youth. And we put a lot of structure around these individuals during the summer, and then, you know, and I, there's, there's other things that we do as well. They can, you know, there's programs at Robert Crown and other things, more informal, kind of drop-in things. But I'm saying there's a lot of effort and structure put around this particular group every year, and then it drops off after the summer. I think it needs to be year-round. And, and I'll talk to people offline about, you know, the benefit that I think we all get, you know, as well as the benefit to, to those individuals. And that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Ravel.
Great, thank you very much. It's been a fascinating discussion. I'm just going to chime in with a few quick comments. First of all, to echo my colleagues, compliments to our wonderful staff for putting together all these different options for us to consider, to come up with a, to address our structural deficit, I guess. I, and the, the survey was, was really very well thought out, and the way you've, you know, calculated our levels of support, I think is, is right on. So I, I am going to, you know, urge that we go ahead with the tier one suggestions in the survey. I, I want to, I want to compliment Councilmember Burns for his idea about having like a five year or a ten year budget balancing plan. I mean, we, we, this, this year is, is pretty easy, but we've got, as you know, some really big ticket items coming very soon, including just even probably halfway through twenty twenty five, we're going to be considering whether to expand the hours of our care team. So we're already looking at needing to find, spend more money even after we pass this budget. So, so yeah, with, how, how are we going to pay for all the, all the major facility renovations, buildings, whatever, you know, that we're, that are coming down the pipe at us very, very quickly? So I'm not sure I want to put that out for a referendum, but certainly some, some serious council and staff discussion about a long, longer term plan than just the annual budget. And then I guess I would just, I'll just end by saying that I, I continue to be supportive of a modest property tax increase this year so that when, you know, a year or two from now, it's not such a giant step that we have to take. So I'm not sure where we are in terms of broad, broad enough support for that, but I, I would certainly, I certainly would like us to keep thinking about that. So thank you.
So now we go back to Councilmember Kelly with four minutes left.
Thank you. I just had a question regarding the water fund. Can you remind me, I know you mentioned this at our joint ward meeting, thank you, Mr. King. What is our current reserve, what do we keep annually for reserve currently in the water fund?
Five point eight million.
We keep five-
It's the minimum target.
And you want to raise that next year?
No.
Okay, so explain, because I know there is an increase in terms of the, the reserve for next year.
If you're talking about the minimum cash reserve, it's five point eight million.
Okay, and what is it, that's what we shoot for?
That's the, the, the minimum, that's the established minimum cash reserve.
Is that sixteen point six percent?
It can vary from year to year, it's based on expenses, so it can go up or down.
The reserve?
Correct.
Okay, but we try to maintain a sixteen point six?
Yes.
Okay, five point, but yet we, we transfer four point one million to the general fund.
Yes.
So, so I guess I question the reserve versus the transfer. Do we need to transfer that money to the general fund?
I, I think one thought is it, it helps the general fund.
Sure.
And so it can prevent, you know, a tax increase or something, you know, from impacting the general fund. So it's helping the general fund. In whatever way the general, the general fund needs help, it, it's just helping it.
So I guess my question is, do we need to keep, okay, so I guess it's more, do we need to keep such a large reserve? Because that's money, generally, you know, reserve is sitting there for an emergency. Do we need to keep such a large reserve in the water fund?
Well-
Could we reduce that and reduce that reserve and make that part of our transfer instead and reduce our reserve in the water fund?
We could reduce the reserve if City Council wanted us to go away from the city's- We could reduce the reserve if city council wanted us to go away from the city's policy on that. Um, previously, before the reserve um, was increased, every year since probably 2008 or nine, the minimum reserve was three and a half million. But we weren't going by the sixteen point six percent. It was just a flat three and a half million or so every year.
Okay, and so now it's five point, somewhere five.
Five point eight.
Yeah, so I do wonder if we could consider reducing that reserve and, you know, re- reducing, sorry, we'd still continue to transfer that amount, but we'd reduce the reserve. I think that's something that should be looked at in terms of how often we've depleted or really, you know, where we've had an emergency. I mean, reserves are there for a purpose. They're not just there to generate interest. Um, they're ver, there for emergencies, for if we have to go. So I think it might be worth looking into that large reserve and to consider if that could be reduced to save, to save funding. So I just wanna put that out there. I think we should consider that.
Okay.
Uh, so this time, there's no one else requesting to speak. Uh, so that concludes this discussion.
Point of order. I, I, I would like to seek an opportunity to speak. Again, the items that we rolled into one and, and I thought in good faith was the 2025 proposed budget, a discussion on water rates, the capital improvement, uh, the.
I don't think the discussion on water rates was in there.
Uh, well, not water rates, sorry.
Or was the capital improvement?
All right, but the uh, tax levy for the library, the general assistance tax levy, uh, these are.
All right, so um, the, the, I've given those who wanted up to 10 minutes. I'm, um, having doubled a lot of time in the rules, I'm proposing to move on. Uh, as the rules say, if council wants to overrule that judgment, they're welcome to. So I'm happy to be told to do something other than what I intend to do.
One more opportunity to speak about revenue.
I've, I've, I've given everyone 10 minutes. If the council wants me to relax, that, that's their right. This is not an argument between you and me. It's a discussion of nine people.
I, I would encourage my colleagues to be collegial and let their colleague speak about revenue.
Councilmember Harris.
Um, I would like to allow Devon five of my minutes. You go past that, you're in trouble.
Would you wanna make a, make a motion to grant?
I move to give um, Councilmember Reed five extra minutes to speak.
Councilmember Harris moves to give Councilmember Reed five more minutes to speak. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Seeing a discussion, will the clerk please take the roll?
Or we could just do nothing and then you could just allow me the five minutes. We don't have to specifically vote on it.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Win?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns, Councilmember Saffronant, Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Um.
I'll note that you, you being in trouble, if you go over, was not in the motion.
All right. All right. Um, so I, folks have mentioned a modest property tax increase this year. What does modest mean? And maybe staff can define that. Um, maybe one of the folks who use that term can define what they see as modest.
I mean, our property tax levy is around fifty-five million dollars. So one person is half a million, five fifty, five hundred fifty thousand.
So that's what we're seeing as modest? Okay, so five hu, so for, that's helpful. So for five hundred thousand dollars, we want to increase the cost. We, if we, if, in order to find five hundred thousand dollars, we can either increase the cost of housing or we can adopt the bag tax at uh, an extra 10 cents and that'll be about half that. Um, again, a tax that does, that is perfectly avoidable, that uh, is born not only by Evanston residents, but by folks who shop in Evanston from Wilmette, from Chicago, um, and would not have uh, the impact of, again, increasing the cost of housing in our town. Uh, you couple that with the third-party delivery surcharge and we're right there again. So there are other options. If you're looking to solve the problem, which is the structural deficit, you can do it by making housing more costly, or you can do it by uh, increasing completely avoidable, essentially luxury taxes um, and fees based on things that impact our local economy, impact our environment. To me, it feels like a no-brainer to go down the route of the luxury items rather than the necessity, which is housing. So I would encourage us to really, really think about that uh, differently. Um, I would encourage us, the vacant property fees, really, it's, it's been discussed to some degree in that, um, you know, folks have said that we should go with the top 12. I think we should try to dip down and folks should really search their souls to look at a, a few of the others. Uh, one that I really strongly oppose is the administrative adjudication fees. We're gonna add on hidden fees, like we're a credit card company or we're some vulture that is adding on hidden fees to um, cover the cost of administrative adjudication. If you're getting a ticket, so one, would people who are found innocent or not liable, would those folks have to pay the fee? And if not, why not just raise the cost of the ticket to cover the cost of the hearing? Just make the fees clear upfront, what it's gonna cost if you park in the wrong place, if you do whatever the heck that we don't want you to do. Let's just tell you what the cost is gonna be. Let's not hide hidden fees and by adding this uh, administrative adjudication fee. It just uh, does not seem like good, transparent, straightforward policy to me. So I'd encourage us not to go down uh, that route, but I would be supportive of increasing certain fees if, uh, to make up whatever the, the difference is. Um, I would also um, encourage us to, I strongly believe that we have the ability, and I would love for our legal department to look into this, uh, with home rule authority to make adjustments to the property tax code. I think that is within our home rule authority. Um, I don't think any other city has done that. Um, but I do think it is, it is our prerogative to do so. And I think we can make smart adjustments to the property tax code that incentivize the things that we want. We don't want huge, um, you know, impervious parking lots. We don't want vacant buildings. We don't want, you know, all kinds of stuff that are currently incentivized in the property tax code that we, I believe, under our home rule authority, we could change and uh, and essentially bring in additional revenue to uh, the city and our uh, taxing uh, partners within the same area. Um, the last thing I'll, I'll discuss here on revenue is um, the uh, well, one, I, I, I really am uh, skeptical of the $200,000 retention and expansion grant. I think it's something, you know, it's something worthwhile, but I think we really need to find a pay for if we're going to move down that right and route. And I'll note, kind of ironically, that uh, you know, the, we gotta stop adding things to our budget that aren't paid for. And the person who brought this forward actually has added more to the deficit uh, than I think any other member. But I, I think this is, um, you know, we, we need to figure out how to pay for that. And then lastly, uh, last year, I brought up uh, large non-property tax paying entities, Northwestern, the hospitals, uh, paying for fire fees. That's not here. And our fire chief uh, then said they would have discussions. Um, and I just, I'm curious where those discussions went. And that's, again, substantial. It's five hundred thousand dollars plus um, easily six hundred, seven hundred thousand if we're including the hospitals, which we may or may not. Um, so I'm just curious where that went.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember, for that question. Uh, we have had some conversations with Northwestern. Those conversations are ongoing on that front.
So they've, it's been a year, so essentially they're, they're not agreeing to it. And I would encourage us to use the power, our legislative authority to impose these fees um, at some point. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our discussion on the items previously moved. Is there a motion relative to item SP2?
I'll move item SP2.
Councilmember Reed moves that we discuss the proposed water rate increase in the FY 2025 budget. Councilmember Newsma seconds. Councilmember Reed.
Thank you. All right. Um, good for making the point that that was not one of the motions. So um, to pick up where Councilmember Kelly left off, we did have this discussion of finance and budget. Um, I, I do think.
Hold on, hold on. Uh, Mr. King, you have a presentation?
Yes.
All right, let's, let's, let's start with that. It's my fault?
Yeah, yeah.
Totally my fault. Uh, you'll be first in line after the presentation.
Mayor Bis, uh, members of city council, manager Stowe, Darryl King, Water Production Bureau Chief. Okay, okay. Um, just here to give an update on uh, the water fund, the proposed rate increases. So the uh, current financial goals of, of the water fund is to maintain the cash balance, five point eight uh, million, uh, keep debt service expenses associated with the distribution system to less than 25% of operating capital, maintain the water treatment plan in good operating condition, uh, replace or rehabilitate 3.2 miles of uh, water distribution system manually and uh, replace approximately 500 lead service lines a year beginning in 2027. Um, this number could increase to 625 to 1,000 per year beginning in 2027. And that's due to the new uh, lead copper rule improvements. And, and I'll, I'll talk more about that. And so just a summary of, of the water fund, just looking at the rates through the years. Uh, as you can see, 2015 through 2021, for the most part, the total rate stayed the same. Um, the water rate did get increased. The sewer rate was steadily decreased each time. And in 2022, uh, the affordable rate was established. And um, we've, uh, there, there has been increases uh, due to the, the need, the demand for the capital projects that we're facing. Um, this table is a summary of proj, projections uh, for the water fund, which includes uh, bond amounts, uh, proposed water rate increases, previously scheduled increases, um, total rate increases and the percent uh, debt to revenue. And, and this is based on the distribution system. Um, as last year, you know, there was a seventeen point uh, five percent. Uh, there was a four percent previously scheduled rate increase. And that was uh, due to uh, the hiring of, of seven full-time positions, four in the, at the water plant, uh, that will focus on replacing lead service lines. And then three uh, with public services that'll focus on performing street restorations following lead service lines. Um, and then for 2025, there was already a previously scheduled rate increase of 9.8%. And, and then due to the, the lead service line replacements, as well as doubling the amount of water main uh, that we plan to replace, that's where the thirteen and a half, so 23.3 uh, for service year uh, '25. Now, the rest of the years that are listed there, those are projections. Um, staff, we, we, we review the, the, the water fund every year. So it's a year-to-year um, uh, exercise that we go through. And of course, what we're, what I'm talking about here tonight only pertains to 2025. And then this map, um, the red is, is, is the big, is the big picture there. And uh, that, that's representative of, of water mains that are uh, 100 years, greater than 100 years old. And so, you know, you're looking at in the red over, over 50 miles, it's like 53 miles or so of water main right now, today, that's over 100 years old. Water main typically, cast iron water main typically has a life 100, maybe 120, maybe, depending on the type of soil that it's, that it's uh, installed in. And, and so that's the need to double um, the amount of uh, water main that we replace each year. Uh, currently, we're, we do one and a half miles each year. Uh, we're, we're proposing or 1%. We're proposing or the plan is to increase or the goal is to increase that to 2%. And so that'll take the replacements up to 3.2 miles uh, each year. So that in 20 years or by 2042, we'll have zero miles of water main in town that's 100 and, 120 years or greater. It, it'll be zero if we double the amount now. And so just a, a snapshot of water main costs uh, per linial foot, uh, 2019 to 2021. Uh, that was prior to the Illinois law requiring uh, full lead service line replacements as part of the water main work. We, we replace water main annually. And, and so once that law was enacted in 2022, we see that cost went from 648 to 859. And so uh, we're, we're seeing a 32% increase in the water main work that we currently perform. And, and so it, it, it should be noted, and I, I think I mentioned this, uh, future rate increases are anticipated, but it's, it's evaluated every year. Things change. Um, both the water and sewer fund models were, were updated uh, to, for the proposed rate increases in '25. Three scenarios came from that exercise. Scenario one, uh, 0% rate increase and uh, and a full 4.1 million transfer to the general fund. Uh, staff did not recommend that scenario. Scenario two was the 23.3% rate increase. Water full transfer of 4.1 million to the general fund and a decrease of 13 and a half percent of the sewer fund that was recommended. And then scenario three, uh, 10.5% rate increase uh, and a $2 million transfer to the general fund instead of 4.1 million. And then a 13 and a half percent uh, sewer decrease. That one ultimately was not recommended. And I'll show you each one. So this table represents scenario one, uh, showing uh, 0% rate increase, full transfer to the general fund. And as you see, uh, the, 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 the red dotted line represents the minimum cash reserve, 5.8 million. And you see it just dips down and by 26, 27, it bottoms out. And, and so that's scenario one. Uh, scenario two, uh, anticipated 23.3% increase remains necessary. Uh, however, uh, the sewer rate reduction can be increased. Originally, we were looking at increasing that 9.8%. So the, the pre-scheduled water rate increase was 9.8%. So we were anticipating decreasing the sewer rate 9.8%. Um, but ac, after we went through the exercise, uh, we were able to decrease the sewer rate 13 and a half percent, uh, which offsets a greater portion of the water rate increase and the, the combined net increase for water and sewers, 7.15% in, in, instead of that uh, you know, that full 23.3%. So it will cost, it'll cost more, 7% more, 7.15% more, a total rate. Um, and, and so the adjustment reflects continuing that 4.1 million transfer. And uh, the affordable rate won't be impacted by any of these uh, rate increases. And we currently have 606 participants. And uh, Director uh, Thompson uh, spoke earlier about Parks and Rec being a community service uh, department and, and they are because it was because of her and her staff while, while those numbers got up. Because we were struggling previously to get people uh, approved and signed up for that. And we partnered with, with Parks and Rec and they, 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 that was because of them. And, and so uh, that affordable rate won't be impacted. Uh, so this is scenario two with the 23.3% uh, increase. Uh, 4.1% 4.1 million dollar transfer. Uh, and, and again, the sewer uh, uh, the sewer rate is decreased 13 and a half percent. And so this is what that uh, impact will be or, or what. And so this is what that impact will be, or what the rates look like in '24. So the number in light black, the $3.91, $3.91 in 2024, that represents the cost per 100 cubic feet. And then in blue, it's the cost per 1,000 gallons, so we just converted it. And then in '25, you see that cost per 100 cubic feet goes from 391 to 482. And but the sewer rate, as you can see in '24, is at 308. And then in '25, it decreases to $2.66 because of the 13 and a half percent sewer decrease. And then the annual cost for water and sewer goes from 839 to 897. And so you're looking at an annual increase of $58.59. So that's about $5 extra or so a month more. And so scenario three, a $2 million reduction in the annual transfer. So instead of 4.1 million, it would be a $2 million transfer. That would reduce the water rate increase to 10.54%, which would be completely offset by the sewer decrease of 13 and a half percent. And again, community members on the affordable rate wouldn't be impacted. This scenario wasn't recommended because, again, it takes away from what goes to the general fund to assist the general fund in the needs that may be there. Okay, so that's what it looks like, very similar to scenario two. And so this table is showing what the area rates are for communities. So the top one is Deerfield, which is, the total rate is the highest combined water and sewer. And then the bottom one is Palatine, you know, 7.13. And then Evanston's proposed, you know, we're in the middle, bottom part of the middle at 10.01. And then the affordable rate is the lowest. And, you know, one thing to note is I took a look at all of the communities and how many lead service lines they have. And, you know, City of Chicago is in another stratosphere. They got over 400,000 of them. The next highest is Evanston, you know, we're just under 10,500. And then you have, who was that? Oak Park, they're just under 4,000. And then Arlington Heights is, you know, just under 6,500. Everybody else is in the hundreds. There are about five communities with zero, one community with five. And so Evanston by far has a much greater need in terms of replacing lead services, of course, than Chicago. And, you know, we're still, in terms of rates comparison, we're still in the, towards the bottom middle, approaching the middle part of the area. So I just wanted to note that. And then this table actually provides a much clearer picture in what's going on with rates in the area involving those same communities. Because, you know, you see where Evanston is, but see, many communities have fixed charges. So they're charging way more than just what that combined water and sewer rate is. They have charges, you know, $330.60 on top of the water and sewer charges. And so when you're just looking at, this is based on like a 3/4 inch meter, 86,000 gallons in a year used at a residence. You know, Evanston is where we are on this table compared to other areas within Cook County. And so this gives a really good picture too of where we currently are with the proposed increase. And so we've all heard of the lead and copper rule improvements that were finalized earlier last month in October. And one thing that I want to say is, until the LCI was finalized, it hasn't been published in the federal register yet. So we're still under the Illinois Lead Service Line Replacement and Notification Act, which is a 20-year replacement program starting in 2027. So I just, I wanted to make that clear. Once the LCI is published in the federal register, it goes into effect in 2027. The vast majority of water systems will be required to replace lead service lines within 10 years. For a limited number of drinking water systems, and I'm not going to read all that, that cannot replace it in 10 years, there's a, like a deferred schedule. And the city staff has already gone through the calculation, and it shows that we would qualify for that. And it looks like about 16 years. But once the LCI is enacted, it's 10 years until we hear back from IEPA, Illinois Environmental Protection Agency, that, hey, Evanston has been approved for that deferred schedule. So we don't have to apply for it. They automatically calculate it, and they reach out to us. And at the regulatory update recently, I spoke to IEPA about it. And we don't expect to hear from them until 2027, unless something changes. And so just some other things, the LCI lowers the action level. So before it was 15 parts per billion, now it's 10 parts per billion. Water systems with multiple exceedances, there are things that they will have to do more than, you know, before. LCI makes key changes to sampling requirements. So before, under the old lead and copper rule, we took the first liter, and we tested both lead and copper. Now we take the first and the fifth liter, and the fifth liter represents more of the service line. And you take the highest of the two now, so that'll change. And so another thing is water systems must offer a sample, must offer to sample for lead in the tap water for all properties served by a lead service or galvanized line. So earlier this year, we sent out over 10,000 notices to areas where we believe had lead or galvanized. In 2027, we would have to actually offer lead sampling to all of them now. And then again, the following table summarizes the annual costs for a 20-year program, 500 replacements, 11.6 million. 16-year, 625, 14.6. And then 10-year, 1,000 replacements, 23.3 million annually is what that could look like. And I think that's the last slide.
Wow, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Reed, followed by Nusma.
My time restart. All right. One, this is more of a tartine, so an open-faced sandwich. But I just want to start off with, I remember, I think it was 2021, when we, this council, soon after this council was seated, and I remember asking the question about the affordable rate, and there were 17 folks signed up at the time, if I remember correctly. So one, great work to you, and obviously Director Thompson, as you highlighted on improving that number substantially. So two, where Councilmember Kelly left off. One of the questions I had early on was, you know, why the 5.8 million dollar balance? You've been with the Water Department for 25 years?
Nine years here, 27 in the industry.
27 in the industry. And then Director Keno, you've obviously been with the city for some time, and director for some time as well. In your experience here in Evanston, so we'll go the last nine to 10 years, what has, what has been the most expensive thing that was unplanned for? You know, something broke out in the water, or some, what has happened that has, we've had to draw on the reserves?
Anytime a, you know, you could have a situation where a contractor hits a transmission main accidentally. We had that happen last year. That probably was 80, it was under 100,000 to repair that. Sometimes you may have just something unbudgeted that comes up that needs to be taken care of, so you draw from the reserves for that. If your question is, have we ever had to spend, you know, most of the reserve or all of it for something? We haven't.
A million dollars of it in a year?
Not that I can recall.
Director Keno, do you have anything different than that? No. Again, reserves are important. I don't know, you know, why are we using the 16.66% model for the water fund? You know, I get it as a general accounting practice for the general fund, but I don't know if there's better data that we can use to, oh, Clayton, or Mr. Black.
I just want to mention too, that it's based on a percent of expenses in that given year. So the largest bill we got on the water intake project has been closer to about $5, $6 million. And so it changes, and the reserve changes based on expenses in that year. And that particular expense is paid for with IEPA loans, which are reimbursable. So we have to front that cash. And then our cash in the water fund does, at that point, go down close to zero. And then we're reimbursed by IEPA maybe a month or two later, and it goes back to the full level. So we carry enough funds, reserves in the fund not to kind of hoard money in the fund, but to be able to make payments throughout the year until we're reimbursed by those loans.
Yeah, but for example, the IE, the IE8, the I E P A loan, that wasn't something that was unexpected. That was something we knew was coming down the pipe, that we could plan for, that we could draw on the general fund reserve or some other source. Because we knew that that was a scheduled maintenance of our intake, or really actually an addition, correct?
Let me just add one more thing. I think IEPA, and I think Paul Mayano, I think in the past had mentioned this. IEPA and we applied for VFA loan for this big project, which is the federal government. And they have a requirement to show the enough fund balance, the reserves, before they approve a loan.
And what was their requirement? What was the number?
16.66.
Okay. I would, thank you for that. I think it's possible for us to return to the previous number of around 3.5 million. And when we have, you know, water intake projects or large projects, we can plan for those. But that would be, you know, potentially a $1.5 million transfer annually. And I would say we reduce the fund, the reserve balance, and then transfer an additional amount into the general fund at the tune of 1.5 million. I think that would help us offset, or not I think, that would certainly help us offset the deficit that we have. And I don't think there would be much additional risk, but I'd love for the team to look into that further. A quick question here, does the city subsidize water? Other than the, you know, the reduced rate, do, at the general rate, are we paying more to provide the service to folks than they're paying us for the service?
No, not that I'm aware of, no.
And I want us to also think about that. I'll close on the water thing here.
Can you repeat that, reduce, your question was for us to look at reducing the reserve?
If we were to reduce the reserve by 1.5 million annually and transfer that to the general fund, would we be putting the water fund at some substantial risk?
So now are you saying transfer more to the general fund?
Correct.
Okay. So the only thing, I'll say this, in terms of funding from these agencies, IEPA, different things like that, we want to make sure we adhere to whatever their requirements are because the funding is dependent upon that. So even if we're taking out a loan from IEPA, it's a low-interest loan, less than 2%, so we want to always take advantage of that. Also, with principal forgiveness, we still have to make sure we qualify for the loan, even though some of it may be forgiven. And I'm speaking in terms of lead service replacements and disadvantaged census tracts that categorizes that. And so we want to make sure we're doing that and still qualifying for that, but we'll take a look.
And then in response to that, I would just love to see a few examples, one or two examples of someone who says you have to have a 16.66% fund balance in order for us to give you money. And so I'd just be interested in seeing that from an outside agency. But to the question I asked about the city subsidizing water, the answer is no, we do not subsidize water. We, the consumers pay, our residents and the other consumers pay the cost of providing them the service. I'll just close with this, we don't do that for parking. We don't do that for a whole host of other things. Water is literally required to live. And so if we are unable to subsidize water, we should be unable, or equally unable, to subsidize not walking a block to get to your favorite store. So I just want us to really begin to put this stuff into perspective and where our priorities are. And then I'll close. How much time do I have left?
11 seconds.
With my last 11 seconds, I will speak to, again, we need more revenue. We, participatory budgeting was proposed for looking at capital improvements. I think we need to approach PB, and I'll close in the next five seconds. But I think we need to implement PB. And I think with participatory budgeting, we need folks to help us find new revenue, not new ways to spend money, but new ways to bring in money. And go through the same PB process we went through. This will help us solve things with our water fund, across funds. But we need to make that investment in getting the community's input on how do we find new sources of revenue to the tune of $2 to $3 million per year. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to respectfully disagree with the direction that my colleagues have given you, Councilmember Reed and Councilmember Kelly, with regards to the fund balance in the water fund. The ability for the city to provide water, not only to our residents, but all of the, all of the other municipal customers that we serve is kind of so fundamental. If there's ever a place for a conservative approach to budgeting, it's in our water treatment, in our water infrastructure. So let's, I see no reason to reduce the 5.8 million or 16.6% fund balance policy. And as you mentioned, I just want to clarify this for emphasis, that is a requirement in order to be eligible for the low-interest loans that we rely on to do the work that we need to do. So to me, it's kind of a no-brainer that we would want to do anything different. We shouldn't do anything different with the fund balance policy. So having said that, I just want to clarify that we've seen this, essentially the same presentation a year ago, at which point we approved a rate for this year in the context of, you know, of upcoming- of, you know, of upcoming obligations to replace lead service lines and other factors. And also in the context of, at that time, you presented a strategy or, you know, a plan for going forward and knowing that we would be reapproving on an annual basis, you're kind of recommitting to that plan. So that's what we're doing tonight, correct?
Correct.
We're just kind of following through with the, the strategy that was set in place a year ago. So I have a question about the lead service line schedule. Are your forward-looking projections still based on the 20-year timeframe?
Yes.
And we know that's going to change.
Correct. It'll, it'll eat, as long as the, the LCRI has to be published.
Right. So let me say, we're extremely confident that is, but we don't know for sure, but 95% certainty, we know that we're going to have less than 20 years.
Yes.
And I don't know what the number is, but 75% certainty that we could take up to 16 years.
Yes.
But we haven't changed the, the direction yet.
Not reflecting what I'm showing you tonight, that's still based on 20.
Okay. So that's something for us all to keep in mind. Like, we know that we're going to have to spend more money in a shorter period of time, but we just don't know when that period of time is going to start. So do we want to readjust now, not knowing exactly what we're shooting for? Or do we want to stay the course for another year and hopefully by this time next year, we'll know definitively how much time we have.
Correct. Next year.
That's your recommendation?
Yeah, next year, we'll, once it's published, we'll, we'll adjust.
All right. I think that approach makes sense. Even if we qualify for 16 years, do we want to take the full 16 years? Like, from a financial perspective, yes, but from a public health perspective, from a perception and how do we compare with other communities in the neighborhood or in the region? If everyone else is 10 years and it's only Evanston and Chicago that are 16, like, I think I'd rather shoot for less than 16.
I think it depends on how quickly this council wants to deal with the issue. You know, in Evanston, we, we have corrosion control here, we have that.
Right.
The, the testing frequency is, is starting next year due to the lead and copper rule revisions. So it's like three things out there right now. We'll be required to do lead sampling 60 locations twice a year. And so we're, we're sampling more. And then, you know, point-of-use pitchers that remove lead, I have one in my house, you know, I don't, I don't have a lead service line, but I, I use one.
The longer it takes us to replace the lead service lines, the more it's going to cost us until we do.
It could cost more, but from a, from a financial standpoint, it could cost more the longer you do it.
Right.
If you do it quicker, now that demand is more, so now you're putting more pressure on the Water Fund, on the city to, to deal with that.
So I want to talk about that. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but built into the current 20-year strategy, the thought is that we would pay for the lead service line replacements out of the revenue that we generate in that year.
Yes, and that, but it, it won't be all cash. So it's going to be some debt involved in that, it's going to be hopefully some principal forgiveness involved in that. It's, it's, it's going to be fund, funding lead service line replacements will happen through many sources of funding. But it won't be all cash, because if we increase the demand on cash, that's just going to increase the, the demand for rate increase.
But there might be a place for long-term debt, whether that's a WIFIA loan or a bond or some kind of long-term debt, to spread that cost out over a longer period of time, even though we have, let's say, a 10-year timeframe to do the project. We don't have to pay for it completely within 10 years.
Yeah, so the, the work we're getting ready to start in Census Track 8092, Fifth Ward, we, we have, we've been awarded $25 million by IEPA. It's a zero-interest loan, 30 years, because the award was based on census tracts that are classified by the state and, by the state as disadvantaged. And so because of that, it's, it's zero interest, it's over 30 years instead of 20, with the potential for principal debt forgiveness, which we're earmarked in, in the first year of it, it's a five-year program to receive $3 million. So yes, absolutely, it can be spread out. Now, in areas outside of a disadvantaged census tract, if it's, if it's not just paid by cash or, or grant or something like that, it'll be a low-interest loan over 20 years. Now, one thing I want to mention is the, the grant opportunities I'm seeing are, are based on disadvantaged areas. And, and so here in Evanston, we have 19 census tracts, seven of them are considered disadvantaged. So the, the four that we receive funding for scored the highest. As compared to the rest of the census tracts in the state, they scored the highest in Evanston, and those were the ones that actually received that type of funding. But the, the other census tracts that don't fall into that, they're not qualifying. And I'm not saying I've seen every grant, but the ones we've seen, they're typically for populations like 3,400 people or something like that, or disadvantaged communities.
Right, thank you. So I guess, you know, my feedback is, let's, let's not assume we're going to take 16 years, you know, let's plan for something less than 16 years and let's remain open to creative ways. And it's going to be challenging to piece this all together and, you know, figure out how we're going to pay for it. Last thing I want to add, though, is with regards to the cost of the lead service line replacements, it, maybe it's not, maybe the need is not quite as dire in many other communities around here, with the exception of Chicago. But nonetheless, with this new federal mandate, like, the demand for lead service line replacement services is really going to go through the roof and that, that's why the price is going to go up. So I think it would really make sense for us to develop internal in-house capabilities to do this work, staff up, you know, for a period of 10 years to do this work and try and keep those costs down by keeping them in-house. So we've had some discussion about this at the Utilities Commission with more to follow. So I'll just leave it at that for now. I heard my bell. Thank you.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Are there, where are we at in terms of grants? I know there's federal grants coming available. Are we projecting, do we have projections in terms of grant money for this, for the lead service replacement?
So we're, we're using grant money now, of course. You're aware of the, the Department of, the DECO grant. So we're using that right now. That project started last Monday and we're replacing 100 services using a million dollars of that. Since, I get, what is it, 2022, we've been using ARPA funds for that. We've also, as I mentioned, we're earmarked to receive just over $3 million in principal forgiveness in year one of that $25 million award from IEPA SRF State Revolving Fund. So that's a grant. And then we have staff that are actively looking for grants. But again, I just want to state that the grants that we're seeing so far are for disadvantaged communities or communities with really low populations. And, and I'm not saying that I've seen them all, but just the ones that we've come across so far.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much for the extremely comprehensive information and all the work on this important issue. That concludes our discussion. Is there a motion relative to item SP3?
Mr. Mayor, I will move discussion regarding the final proposed 2025.
Yeah, so this is a, there's a bit of a typo on the agenda here. So there's, the, the recommendation is for action rather than discussion.
So I'm moving discussion of the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
Right?
I mean, that's not what the agenda.
Am I moving action?
You're moving, you're moving what you want to move, you're a free person, but the recommendation is action.
Okay. Oh, I will move the, the capital improvement plan for action.
And let me be clear, before someone seconds it, what's being proposed is a vote that would then trigger this being put in the budget that would come back to council. So this would not be a final vote, but, but what's being requested is a, not just to kind of read the tea leaves, but an actual vote of council before staff then puts the capital improvement plan in the budget that would come back for introduction next week. All right, so with that, long-winded explanation out of the way, Councilmember Newsman moves acceptance of the revised CIP to be incorporated into the FY 2025 proposed budget. Councilmember Harris seconds. We have a presentation from our chief engineer.
Thank you, members of the city council, mayor. My name is Laura Biggs. I'm the city engineer. So I have a very short presentation just to discuss some of the changes. Here is our timeline, we're in the middle of a city council discussion. At the last meeting where we had a budget discussion about the CIP, we talked about prioritizing the projects into three different categories. The first category being projects that had already begun prior to January 1st, 2025, projects that were meeting criteria that we've historically used to prioritize projects. And then the third category are new projects, but those that really don't fall into the bucket of meeting those historic criteria, but were there because of some very specific community needs. So we did receive some feedback specific about some projects at our last city council meeting. And then we also internally looked at projects that are going to happen over multiple years. And we sort of spread the funding into the years that it will be spent, rather than the years that the contract will be approved. This was a recommendation of our Finance and Budget Committee as we move forward to, to sort of avoid really large upfront capital costs when a project's going to take multiple years to get done. So in doing that, a quick summary is that we were able to take 2.174 million out of the proposed 2025 GO bond issue. And simultaneously, we also did a little bit of a larger decrease in the overall 2025 capital improvement program. And so with that, unless there is further discussion or further suggestions for changes, we will take this proposed budget, which is, or proposed capital program, which is included in detail in the packet, and we will include that in the 2025 budget for implementation. Also note that without further feedback, we actually already are starting some of our projects in things like street resurfacing. We do a lot of upfront prep work, so we are beginning to do that. So feedback at this time is very helpful if there are any changes that are requested. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
Member Newsman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, thank you, Laura. I'm glad that Gray Park is in this and thank you for the council members who've agreed to support that. I just want to confirm the, the bond amount. I saw two different numbers in the memo. One was 21.9 and one was 21.3 million. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding and we're all on the same page.
My apologies for that inconsistency.
It might have been my misunderstanding.
I am looking at it. I'm not ignoring the question, looking at the file. I believe it is 21.345,000.
Okay.
Is the proposed GO bond amount.
And as we're looking at here, I'm not sure where I saw that 21.9 million, but if the answer's 21.3, then so be it. And then looking at some of the projects that were taken out to reduce the total CIP balance, do you have a slide on that?
I do not.
There is a page in the memo, page two of six in the memo. So I'm looking at something, for example, the canoe launch.
Yes.
That was taken out, $400,000 was taken out for the canoe launch. That doesn't mean the project isn't proceeding.
No, that is representative of several of the projects where it's going to occur, construction will occur over multiple years, so some of the funding was moved into a subsequent year.
Okay, so that, we're not, we're not pushing that project back?
No, that particular project, after discussions with the Evanston Environment Association and looking at our own schedule for getting the project done, most likely that will be bidding next fall and will be awarded next fall, but a lot of the construction is expected to occur in 2026.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then I had a question about alley paving, and I am wondering if what's in the current CIP includes pending alleys that might be negotiated as part of plan developments? And I'm thinking specifically of Legacy Horizon and Chicago Avenue and then the Custer Avenue Project, which are coming to council for introduction next Monday, both of which, is my understanding, include some funding for alley improvements and adjacent alleys.
They are not currently included in the capital program. Typically, when we work with developers, because developments themselves have a long time period, it's not that long, two to three years, so that's not huge in the capital world, to get under construction and completed, typically, once the PUD, Planned Unit Development Ordinance, is approved, then we look at beginning the alley and scheduling it so that everything sort of comes together at the end. So we have time, based on what is negotiated for those developments, to then put that in and respond accordingly.
So you're saying we have time because they won't, we won't be able to pave the alleys in 2025?
Yes.
It will be 26 by the time those projects get to the place where we'd be paving the alleys?
Exactly.
Okay, right, so we're not, we haven't forgotten about them, they're just out more than a year.
We're very excited anytime we get developers to contribute to our alley challenges.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Since we're on CIP and since Councilmember Newsman just brought up alleys, I touched on this earlier, but didn't get a definitive number. What is the 2025 projected expenditure on alley pavement?
Hold on one second, let me just pull that up. So we have, so sorry. We had our standard amount and then we actually added quite a bit of funding for alleys. Ideally, I would have all this memorized. Okay, so what we have currently showing is we have 650,000 in general obligation bonds, but it is a total of $2.7 million. And a portion of that is in CDBG funds to pay for an alley in a community development block grant area. And we also have additional $1 million in funding that'll be coming. And we also have additional million dollars in funding that'll be coming from a transfer from the General Fund Reserve to the Special Assessment Fund, which will pay for another three to four alleys that have not yet been selected.
So in 2025, we plan on paving how many alleys?
We have, um, we have three settled, or four settled for sure. And then with the additional funding that has come from the Special Assessment Fund, we released additional petitions. We'll have to wait and see what comes back. So we have four for sure, and we anticipate doing another two or three, which will probably be awarded for construction more in the fall time period, but construction may occur in 2026.
Okay, and then, uh, when I used to sit in the clerk's seat and on the Board of Local Improvements, there were about, am I correct, 30 petitions out at the time?
Yes, so nine years ago, when I took over as city engineer, there was a waitlist of 10 or 15. Every year it's increased till it's about 86, which actually, some of our alleys have more than one person who's put in a petition. So it's 74 discreet alleys right now that people are requesting petitions on. Each year, we release about five to 10 petitions. Not all of those are successful, and so from that, we get two to three alleys to do. So to that end, if we have 86, then in seven to nine years at our current rate, you will get a petition if you go on the petition waitlist today. However, with the additional funding, we hope to get through another 10, 20 petitions. So that will start to help knock down the list of petitions and get through the waitlist faster.
Okay, um, thank you for that. Does Chicago have, do we know how we compare to other communities? Does Skokie have unpaved alleys? Does Chicago, I don't think I've ever seen an unpaved alley in Chicago.
I do, I don't know.
I don't ride around Skokie too much.
I certainly can look. I can tell you, we have many unpaved alleys, and they do contribute to a variety of challenges for residents and for our city. As part of our, what we want to work on in this coming year, I think we really want to define where all the unpaved alleys are and understand exactly what it's going to take to get through them and work with our finance department to come up with some proposals.
Thank you, and I think our last CDBG alley is in the ninth ward, and that's this year, or am I wrong?
I don't think it was in the ninth ward, but, but we did, I think, as far as like eligible alleys in CDBG areas, I think there's only like one or two left.
Yeah, we either, in 2025, will pave our last CDBG alley, or we already did.
Not quite. We have a number, it is significantly reduced, but I think we're almost out of alleys in the ninth ward, because we have gone through significant number of CDBG alleys over the last 20 years, where we've really focused on it using CDBG funds.
Thank you for that. How much time do I have left?
Three minutes and 50 seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna start closing out here. With, uh... I will hold for now.
Councilmember Kelly, followed by Hatakakis, followed by Burns.
Thank you. So just trying to understand with, so we transferred, I think, 1 million this year for alley improvements next year. Then how much total have we allocated for '25 for alley improvements, including that 1 million?
2.7 million.
So 2.7, and that's including CDBG, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. And then my other question is, in terms of the 21 million in, um, proposed to be allocated bond, how much is rolling off next year versus the issuance of 21? Just to understand.
It's, it's around 10 to 12 million. I don't know the exact.
So we're rolling off about 10 to 12 million, but we would issue 21?
Yes.
All right.
We actually took a look at it, and the issue with rolling off bonds is that that is a bond that was sold 20 years ago. So 20 years ago, they sold a $10 million bond. That equals a little over $5 million in today's purchasing power. So not that I'm advocating a $20 million GO bond issue necessarily every year, but essentially we are recreating, if we double the amount of bonds we sell from what we're rolling off, we're getting the same buying power that we would have gotten in the years those bonds were sold, those original bonds.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hatakakis, followed by Burns, followed by, sorry, Councilmember Hatakakis, followed by Burns.
Since we're talking about alleys, just was gonna share with my colleagues, I met with Commissioner Cam Davis and MWRD staff about potential green infrastructure grants, and there is a possibility that if we apply for permeable alleys and through their stormwater retention grant program, we might, may be eligible. So I've asked city manager Stowe to have his staff look into applying for that, so there's a potentially good, a good chance, but you know, you never know with grants. But that'd be another way that we could kind of tackle this problem, so.
Councilmember Burns.
With, in regards to the CDBG alleys, there's, there's a few on the east side of the fifth ward, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, cuz I, I, um, would, would like to add some of those to the list. I've sent some emails to staff about this. What they deal with there is there's a lot of, um, investment property, you know, that's rented out to Northwestern students, and I've found that I think the landlords are less likely to respond to some of the alley surveys. They might be hard to get in touch with, or they are probably less likely to be interested in some of the, the owner-occupied residents in the area. For that reason, I think it, they find it challenging to, to get enough buy-in to improve their alleys. So that's something that I've emailed staff about that I'd like to start to work on.
Just as a note, we are experiencing a challenge with reduction from the federal government in our CDBG allocation, and that is going to be a direct hit to the CDBG fund spent on capital improvement. So we do have concerns that this year might be our last year for doing alleys with CDBG funds. That's something that I know our staff and community development are really looking closely at trying to manage.
Whose alley is up right now? What ward's turn is it?
I do not recall.
Tell me five.
Don't recall, I can find that information and send it.
I squeezed in there. So there's four residents.
Okay, and then in, in terms of, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm interested to know the, you know, if we approve this CIP plan or this, this CIP budget this, for next year, how will our debt payments, how much will they, what will they increase by?
I mean, I would bring it up, the chart we have is based on the old number, which was in proposed budget, but if we add 21.3 million, which would be around 2.65% increase, so on a home of 400,000, the amount of increase would be $48.
And I guess what's the whole, the number, like what is the total increase in debt payments? What would the total increase in debt payments be for 2025? Not how that breaks down per household, but just what's the total number, do we know?
Yeah, so, just a second. So 21.3 million GO bonds, roughly 40%. It depends on the interest environment at that time. But I'm assuming if we go like a late summer, it could be around 40% interest. Total debt service would be around 30 million, and annual debt service would go up by 1.5 million dollars, roughly.
So that's the answer right there, 1.5? Okay. We're starting to discuss this in finance and budget committee, I mean, and I think it's a fair question to say, you know, should we be adding anything until we know exactly how we, until we do what I said before, is really have a plan to balance our budget every year? Should, should we be adding 1.5 right now? Because when we do that, we're making it that much more difficult to, you know, figure out a way to bal, balance our budget. That being said, and I think I've heard us also make this same, um, also suggest that if, that deferred maintenance also has a cost, so it's, we have to balance those two things, but I just wanted to say we are, that was something that we discussed at the last finance and budget committee, and I don't know, hopefully we'll have another finance and budget meeting before this comes back to council, before this discussion comes back to council, cuz it seemed like we were heading somewhere important, so, and that's all, Mayor, thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so go back to Councilmember Reed with 3:40 left.
Thank you. I just want to raise a few things, CIP. Sewer maintenance is within CIP, correct?
It is, uh, different, I mean, there's an actual maintenance.
Sure, sure.
Maintenance, but then we do a number of sewer products, including cured-in-place pipelining, which is one of our primary sewer maintenance programs.
Wonderful, thank you. So the reason I ask that is, I couldn't get to this during my conversation with Mr. King. I'm concerned that with our continuous lowering of the sewer rate in order to tackle the challenge that we have now with replacing our lead service lines, that this council is setting up a future council for failure. We're gonna have sewer lines that are 150 years old and, old and, you know, 100 and some odd miles of them, or whatever the case may be, hundreds of miles of them. And so I'm just really concerned about that. I guess Mr. King wants to.
Councilmember Reed, um, so with, with these reductions to the sewer fund, we're, we're not gonna jeopardize the sewer fund to save the water fund. The reason we're, we've been able to reduce the sewer fund the way we have is because so much debt is falling off the sewer fund from that long-range sewer project that we did, starting back in the early, mid 90s. A lot of that debt is retiring, and so we're able to do what we're doing, but we watch it close. We're not gonna tank out the sewer fund to, to, to help the water fund. And we're not gonna jeopardize maintenance and other capital projects and things of that nature to help the water fund.
How are you sure of that?
Because we constantly evaluate the cost of service model that we use for both the water and sewer fund. We're constantly looking at it, and so we're not gonna allow that to happen.
What is the average age of our sewer lines?
I would have to get that information to you.
Okay. And then, how long does an average sewer line last? You gave us the 100 roughly years on the water lines.
So when we like perform like a cured-in-place type from an old sewer, that'll usually last 20, 25 years, something like that, maybe even a little longer. The, the original sewers that we're replacing, they're, they're much long, they're much older than our cured-in-place, but once we rehabilitate the sewer like that, we, we can get, what, 20, 30 years, 30 years out of it for cured-in-place? Okay, 50 years out of the cured-in-place process.
Okay, and I, I raised this only, as you know, you came to an eighth ward, uh, ward night, and flooding is an issue that I've had a lot of residents reach out to. I bet second ward likely has a lot of that too, just cuz of the, uh, the grade and it being near the canal and, and other wards. But, um, so I'm, I'm just cautious when I see, you know, these things paired, and I'm not doubting that the team is doing their due diligence, but also I'm aware of the fact that the team might want to provide the council with what, and the community, community with what we, it may be perceived as what we want, which is, we don't want to see rates go up too high, too quickly, too high and too quickly. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the proper balancing of just telling, being straightforward with what the costs are going to be to maintain our systems at the level that residents expect and that we need, so our basements aren't flooding and, you know, lifelong, maybe generations-old, you know, heirlooms are being destroyed. We want to make sure that's not happening at the fault of the city or, but also, we want to make sure that we're creating affordable rates. So I just want to make sure that we're staying on top of this, so we're not creating a problem down the line. I presume my time is likely...
One minute left.
One minute left, all right. I will pause for now.
Will the clerk please take the roll?
Oh, well, I didn't realize that was, what was gonna happen next.
So this is a vote to direct staff to include this version of the capital improvement program in the budget that would then come back to us for introduction. Councilmember Reed, it sounds, looks like you want to use up your minute?
Yeah, I'm gonna, or did somebody else slip on their light?
No.
No, okay, I'm, I'm gonna use my minute.
Everyone else wants to vote.
So I, um, so currently, CIP for 2025 stands at, uh, the current proposal is 86 million. Is that total? I'm sorry, yes, the total with the...
82.
I'm sorry.
That current proposal is 82.8 million.
82.8, okay. I mean, I guess there'll be opportunities to potentially influence this down the road, but I, I too would like to see us try to hold the line on the GO bonds. And I, and I'll ask you to repeat the, Councilmember Kelly had a question earlier. Can you repeat what you said about the purchasing power in 2000, whenever?
Sure, so holding the line means that we're matching the $10 million bond that was sold 20 years ago for improvements. And with construction inflation and everything, that $10 million 20 years ago that they sold would be the equivalent of a little over $5 million in construction projects today. So...
I, I think you have your, you're running your inflation, you've got like a time machine on your inflator.
I, so we use the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index to look at costs over time.
Right, but inflation's been positive, not negative, is my point.
Oh.
So it'd be worth 5 million today, rather than 5 million then, I think it's just the flip, and that's, I think...
That's the flip.
Yeah.
So it's what your buying power is essentially. And so, to that end, if we want to get the equivalent buying power that we had 20 years ago, we basically have to double...
10 million would be 20 million, yeah.
The number of bonds we sell. It is not ideal to continue to use bonding to, uh, to fund our capital program, and one of our biggest challenges with that is, uh, there's a lot of other types of funding for transportation and utilities. There's a lot of other types of funding. In fact, it's all other types of funding for water plant stuff. But for our parks and facilities, there really aren't a lot of other types of fundings. We do go after what there is, and there's a little bit available for parks, but there's almost zero available for facilities. And so when we look at like our two most chronically underfunded areas of our capital program, basically, our only choices for funding them right now are debt issuance. Ideally, the city would try to look at that more closely and find an alternative method of funding parks and facilities projects.
Thank you, and I'm gonna close out here, and so 10, 15 seconds, but a, again, we just walked through this with the water fund. We don't subsidize water. We subsidize parking. This is something I talk about quite often. We are losing revenue that could be suppl, that could replace our need to bond out by not appropriately charging for parking. And what this means is that down, one, we're gonna have to pay interest on these loans, obviously, but also, we're, we're subsidizing, again, something that has negative health benefits for people, something that has negative economic benefits in some people's research as far as not spending more time walking around downtown, and so...
Councilmember, just your...
Time is up.
Pastime.
Okay, I'm gonna close here, and so I, I would just really encourage us to, it's probably not gonna happen this year, I'd hope that we can cut some of the GO bonds this year, but also really look toward appropriately charging for our infrastructure, prioritizing capital improvement is one of our goals in 2025 and beyond, but appropriately charging for the services and making sure that we're bringing down our bond debt. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns with two and a half minutes left.
Yeah, I'll, I'll support moving this forward. I, I'm getting closer to feeling, though, that we should not be adding 1.5 million right now. I, I don't think it's the right thing to do. And so I love, I don't know if... And so I love, I don't know if, we probably need enough support to have staff do this, but I'd love to know what it would look like, what the priorities would be if we were to cut this, you know, in half. I, I just, I don't think this is the year to be adding 1.5 to our budget. I don't think we've shown that, we don't have a plan to, to balance our budget, to, we haven't discussed any of this with the community in terms of how they want to see things funded. I think we really need to have that discussion, do a reset before we, we, we add on. So again, I'll, I'll support this moving forward, but I'm, I'm probably going to be a no on a budget, on a CIP budget that's not, not cut in half. And so I, I also would like to know, to my point at finance and budget, you know, it's, it's nice to say that in abstract, but like what are the real consequences of that? What may not be funded next year if we were to, to cut it in half? And that might change my opinion depending on what's going to get cut, but I, I think it's something we, we just have to consider right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Nusma with four minutes left, uh, three minutes left.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, this will be quick. With regards to parks, I mentioned at the finance and budget committee meeting that there are OSLAD and PARK, P-A-R-C, grants available, and I wonder if there's more we could do to pursue, to pursue those lines of inquiry.
OSLAD, we have typically have applied for. Every year we apply for an OSLAD grant, and we're pretty successful. We get them approximately every other year, so that is a pretty good rate of return on investment there. The park grant, I did take a look at it, and as I recall, it was more focused on lower income areas, but I will look at it again. It's not one we've typically pursued. There are a couple of other things that are in parks that we haven't had good candidates for, but we're looking at some other things coming up to see if we can make it work. But fundamentally, a lot of the, the park stuff is either you have a very low income community, and we do have areas that are low income, but we're somewhat limited in that our community is too robustly healthy to apply for some of this stuff, be attracted to it. And, or you have to have a situation where you're really buying new parkland and developing it, and that just isn't something that we're doing a lot of. So the options are just less than they were, but they do continue to grow, so we'll continue to keep an eye on it.
Council, sorry, Councilmember Kelly with 4:25 left.
So we are scheduled to discuss debt at, and CIP at finance and budget next week. I'm wondering if there would be a possibility to hold this? And I, what is the plan, Daniel? Is it, are we looking to try and pass the budget? I mean, I'm just wondering if that, there's room for that to hold this, given the concerns about increasing our debt yet more of this? We could wait and see if we get a recommendation out of finance and budget.
So the schedule that I think was put on the screen earlier envisions the budget, the various budget ordinances being introduced next week, which would make them eligible for action, the, I guess the 25th, which would be after the finance and budget meeting. I think, I think there's a certain amount of understandable confusion about what exactly we're voting on tonight, and this may not be the world's smartest structure. The idea was just an extra round of like kind of non-binding sort of, hey, you're heading in the right direction, at least incorporate this in a budget document for us to consider for introduction next, next week. So I would, I'm not really sure what holding or tabling this item accomplishes, but certainly even, even on the schedule being envisioned at this time, I don't, it's not even legal to vote on the budget prior to the next finance and budget meeting, because that would be, it could be voted on for introduc, could be introduced prior to the next finance and budget meeting, but not acted upon.
Okay, I guess I meant that action of introduction, which I understand is not final action, because we meet the next day on Tuesday? So it comes here for introduction, then financing. It would just be nice when folks are taking a vote if they had feedback from finance and budget, I think. So before, you know, taking, before an introduction vote. I don't know if there's any way that you can envision like that we maybe move everything to a week, to the, to the first December meeting?
I personally wouldn't recommend that, but, you know, particularly because as you said, that finance and budget meeting is 13 days before a potential final vote, so it allows plenty of time. If folks have a sort of moral objection to the introduction vote occurring prior to finance and budget, then folks can table it. I, I don't personally have that kind of moral objection.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very quickly, just because it, it, I think it'll help, am I recognized?
I'm going to run an experiment. How much time do you need?
15 seconds, I think.
You're going to get 15 seconds.
Okay.
Ready, set, go.
All right. I think to solve the concern that I think I'm hearing from some folks on the dice, just to make a motion to amend what is before us today, and I would like to move that we reduce the CIP bond issuance by $10 million.
Let me just kind of highlight, and I know this issue comes up every year. I mean, you can always, I'll have to come with the bond ordinance sometime, whenever we issue the bond, and at that time you can ask me, what is the cash position? What is the fund balance? You know, what are the other sources, like we did last couple of years and when we did not issue the bond? So I think it is more important to have a direction from council about the projects that we want that. When time comes in May, June, July, whenever we are ready to issue the bond considering the rate environment, at that time I'll present the full financial, fund balance, cash balance in CIP, water fund and others. And at that time you can direct, okay, since we are rolling off only 12 million, he does issue the $12 million bond, and the others use the fund balance. So that, you are not approving the bonding mod today. I have to come to the, with an ordinance to the city council for your approval.
Yeah, just, just respond, because I, I didn't necessarily ask for an answer to this, but I, I do want to note that we know that we have a $12 million budget deficit. We're adding 1.5 million dollars.
Is, is there a second to the motion?
So is there a second? Yeah, that's fair.
Second.
All right, so Councilmember Reed moves, what did you move exactly?
That we reduce the 2025 geo bond as it's proposed by $10 million.
And, and so Councilmember Reed moves to reduce the proposed 2025 geo bond by $10 million. Councilmember Kelly seconds, and I want to make sure I understand, is the point then that you want staff to prepare a budget whose CIP has $10 million fewer projects in it?
I think we can look at funding this in a different way. I mean, there could be a whole myriad of cases, whether it's reduction in projects or tapping into other sources of revenue, meaning the general fund reserve balance. Because what we're doing is we're adding 1.5 million dollars, we have a $12 million structural deficit.
Okay, no, I, I hear what you're saying, so. Councilmember Kelly, you put her in your lot, is that to speak on this motion?
Well, I guess just, you know, there's different ways to approach it too. You can also set budgets and try and stay within budgets, or you can say, just, you know, tell us what you need to spend and we'll issue that amount. I mean, so I think it's a little bit about budgetary discipline, but it's also considering Councilmember Burns' point. It's 1.5 million dollars and, you know, certain large portion of that is just interest, which maybe it's better to raise taxes. I'm not, but, but I mean, I think we need to really look at this hard, accumulating yet, you know, higher debt, where we're paying yet just more interest, which doesn't give us anything and is, so, so I, I would second this to say to reduce it so that we're not, I don't, no, I did, sorry, but so that we don't continually, you know, increase, we just did this year 33 million, our debt even more, and consider other ways to, to, to cover what is nondiscretionary expenses.
Point of information, just point of information, maybe this is a negotiating point for the folks who want to raise property taxes, maybe the folks who don't want to raise property taxes, but don't want to raise the, the annual.
This is not a point of information. Will the clerk please take the roll again? The motion is to reduce, it sounds like the motion is to reduce the proposed geo bond by $10 million without any commentary on what that means about projects at all.
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
No.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Chira Karis?
No.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
No.
Councilmember Nguyen?
No.
Councilmember Nusma?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
No.
With two voting in favor and seven voting against, the motion fails and the proposal is not amended. All right, will the clerk please take the roll on the unamended proposal?
Councilmember Sufferton? Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Chira Karis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries. So again, the budget will come forward for introduction next week with the CIP as discussed. I just want to personally editorialize, I am also very concerned about these long run financial questions. I'm also very curious to what the finance and budget committee has to say about visions for long-term sustainable funding of these things. So I think there's, there's important questions here. This brings us now to call of the wards. Councilmember Sufferton?
Fall street cleaning tomorrow, south and west sides of the street, $75 tickets. Don't get one. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
No report.
Councilmember Reed?
Joint Eighth Ward, Fifth Ward and Second Ward Budget Meeting at Robert Crown on November 6th at 6:00 PM, 6:30 or 7:00, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Hatakakis?
More budget discussion at the joint Third, Fourth and Ninth Ward Budget Meeting at the South End Community Center from 5:30 to 7:00 PM on November 7th.
Councilmember Kelly?
NU City Committee Meeting this Wednesday at 5:30 in these council chambers. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris?
Joint Budget, Joint Budget Meeting Wednesday, 7:00 PM, Second, Fifth and Eighth Ward. And that's it for now.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Office hours, Third Ward Office Hours this Thursday at Brothers K from 7:30 till 9:30, and a joint Ninth, Third and Fourth Ward Budget Meeting from 5:30 to 7:30 at Little Beans on Thursday.
Thursday, the 7th. Just in case you missed it, the first.
Councilmember Nusma?
Just in case you missed it the first two times, Joint Budget Meeting, Wards 3, 4 and 9, on Thursday, the 7th, 5:30 at the South End Community Center. Good opportunity for folks to come and see the new community asset in action. Also, Fourth Ward Office Hours this Saturday, the 9th, from 10:00 AM to noon at, pretty sure it's, the coffee shop at Oak and Davis, Barry Pike.
Councilmember Burns?
I'll repeat this again more for Councilmember Nguyen's benefits. I don't think you were here at the last meeting. I asked that, that we consider putting call of the wards during prime time hours, although I appreciate everybody that, that sticks with these meetings in, you know, 9:00, 10:00, midnight, whatever the case may be. I, I think we should set aside two minutes, because I understand people can get long-winded, but I think we should set aside two minutes for each council member at the beginning of meetings alongside city manager reports and, and mayor reports, so that the information that we have can be directed to the folks that I think it was always intended to be directed to, which is the general public and not, not just the media and then the, the few folks who kind of stick in towards the end. So if y'all could let Mayor Biss know how you feel about that, I think it's something that he said with enough support, he could, feels like he could implement without some rule change. I'll let you know if that changes, but thank you.
Seeing nothing further to come before us, the November 4th special council meeting stands adjourned. Everybody go home and pray.